Started. Uh, let's start with the roll call Kramer.
Here.
Ferguson.
Here.
Coops here, Harris absent service.
Here.
Uh, thanks for everybody, or thanks to everybody else for showing up for the meeting. It should be a good one. Uh, so let's please stand. Hi. Yeah, thank you. So, uh, thoughtful changes. Let's let me have some updates to the agenda. Start, Aaron.
I would like to add, um, meet and greet at the community center for the marshal as item C under law enforcement.
Okay. We have one in planning and zoning seven now for the temporary sign for the pair. Also has one for sixteen B. Uh, DOT after the parade and then sixteen A, we're gonna have to move to the next.
Oh. Sixteen B was road closure?
Yeah, uh, DOT.
And then.
Table and A?
A is going to be.
Yep, A is moved to the next agenda, so.
I'd make a motion to accept the agenda as rendered.
Okay, make some motion. Donna seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Linda?
Aye.
Oh, that was really quiet, huh?
Hey, motion carries, um, and so, same calendar approval of the July eighth, twenty twenty five regular meeting minutes.
I was not at the entire meeting, so I, uh, don't wanna make the motion or second this, but.
I make a motion that we approve the regular meeting minutes for July eighth, twenty twenty five.
Make that on next motion.
I'll second.
Aaron, seconds. Any further discussion? Say none. All those in favor?
Aye.
I, motion carries. A conflict of interest declaration, if you have a conflict of interest or any item on the agenda, please state it. Moving on to, uh, town and FEMA updates. The civil word of the twenty twenty five most of drainage. And sewer assessment and improvement plans. And, so I believe I see right.
Uh, yeah, well, so the. Ed Waters Economics did the, uh, on that, um, Bridget, it's also, um. I've been, who was the only one that responded to it, but, uh, I absolutely understood the project and. Uh, basically, uh, FEMA is, uh, is awarded the town. Actually, the application was done when I was still at KLG and, uh, Bridget was, that was one of the last things I got out the door. Um, was the application that you were awarded. And then the way it works is because, um, I wanna be able to do the work, Bridget, and then we used to have technical assistants as well from FEMA. Uh, they were administering everything to get it out to, to the point it's at, so that I could bid on it. And so what it amounts to is, uh, three major areas that we're trying to address. One is, um. Flooding, the flooding that happened in oh seven of the Battle Creek. So that was, that's something that we're gonna study to determine how to prevent that from happening, what changes need to be made. Um, to prevent, um, flooding, like we saw, and getting that to. Beyond the town's southern border. And then the other aspect of it is the, the area around Ferguson sub and all that all flooded. And so the sewer, sewer system's being assessed. Uh, determine, you know, clean, camera, uh, assessed for repairs and to thirty percent design document is what Bridget had in the proposal. So that allows us to then determine the cost estimate so that we can get funds to rehab any of that. Because if that, any of that is leaking, then in any type of flood situation, it would compromise that station and everything. And then the third component is, um, to study being able to convert, basically running a sewer interceptor down Whitney Street. To eliminate those pump stations that are along Whitney. And potentially even eliminate Ferguson sub pump station, so that everything would be gravity all the way to the lagoons. And so would that amount to that maybe moving, having one pump station that would be over by the lagoons that would feed the lagoons? Which could be, uh, advantageous or. Yeah, that could be even combined with a potential septic, rece- septic receiving station. There's a couple of different scenarios there. That this will help on the design construction or designing, uh, application for funding. Uh, for, and then, um, the last little bit was a couple, um, drainage issues that are in town, like that curve. On the east end of Whitney curves back up to Main Street, so there's some flooding there, so. And then, background place, um, there's flooding right there before it get to the Billover Creek on the east side. So this is just some call for sizing and replacement, that's getting covered in gray. That's basically the scope.
Very good, and so we were awarded that grant?
Yep, yeah, it's the town and now it just has to be awarded to. It's a spoken grant.
Yep, Linda?
How long do we have to, to, uh, use this grant or?
Well, you guys gave me a year to get it done, so.
A year from now?
Yeah.
Or the, the letting or from way back when we, from the award, okay?
So, but I think FEMA would grant me a longer time. As customers, they're giving two years, they gave two years.
Okay.
To do customers, so.
Very good. Thank you.
Yep. Uh, Aaron?
Uh, do you need any action taken from us on this?
Uh, yeah, it would, you guys would need to vote to award finish from the bid. It was a bid, it was an actual form of bid, it was announced, published.
Good. You would like to make that motion?
I'll make it.
Can we? It's not on the agenda.
Notice of award.
Oh, the notice of award, yeah, but is that good enough for?
We're noticing that who was given the award.
It's a fixed out, uh, month, it's a grant. There's a zero match, so the state pays.
I understand that, it's just not, kind of on the agenda as in the fact that it needs a motion, so.
Yeah, it should have said motion or action taken and so.
Well, in the, in the schedule, it says notice of award, July twenty second, that's where I got it out of, out of the RFP.
But just going forward, the agenda just note, um, actually taken, however, I do believe that is sufficient notice to. To re-infractuate somebody who's interested in the issue to come here and be part of the discussion process, so thanks probably, Susan, that's the way it is.
Okay, very good. Aaron, would you like to make the motion?
Yep.
I'll second it.
You got it, Terry, if you wanna read it first.
Aaron makes the motion to award. Donna seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, motion carries. And, uh, before we move on, I'd just like to make a quick note, um, so when I took this position, um. I kinda thought I was stepping into the role as the town CEO. And so, um, in doing some further research, I discovered that really the town board president is just a trustee. That runs the meetings and signs paperwork, really no different than any other trustee. And so I inadvertently stepped on Terry's toes, I think, a couple of times. And so I'd just like to take the opportunity to apologize to that Terry, and it was just due to my own ignorance, so. Yeah, going forward, I'm gonna take a little bit of a step back and allow, uh, allow Terry to kind of flesh out her position. And so, um, anyway, so it's like to make that note, Ken?
Yeah, yeah, the, town ordinances are scanned on the duties, specific duties of the FEMA board. Any town board president role. Historically, it's always been treated as that of essentially a, a third-class municipality mayor. But it is not a mayor, to the extent that you don't have, you know, kind of due to power, you always have a vote, not just to break ties, just kind of. So it's, it's definitely a high, whether Ibert comes in as one of the, if, if the, uh. We're gonna need another agenda.
Of the show.
I'm glad you're here, yeah, here.
Okay. All right, let's, uh, let's the record stay Shannon, I did, uh, six, six eleven. Good, very good. Thank you, Jen. I'd be happy to continue.
So what I would recommend to the board is to make this, um, uh, airtight, consistent, state stat. So far, so far what I've seen, the, uh, third, uh, class municipalities given, um. Many of the alike enabled, enabling statutes at all, enabled to undertake all the other, uh, rights and responsibilities that a. First and second-class municipality has. In fact, it mentions, and I'll mention, it states under most, many of these municipal code sections. That unless otherwise stated, a third-class municipality is covered, the word municipality covers third-class as well, unless specifically referenced otherwise. Okay, so there's that. Um, with that, uh, I'm still looking at matter, but, um. With that to be, um, again thorough, if you want to say, uh, say it. Uh, and ordinance should be put in place that enumerates the powers of the board president. And every group needs a leader, every group needs a CEO, and I think, um, uh, we'd add give one to lead here, so. Um, my recommendation is that a ordinance be. Provide or created that enables the town board president to be liberal, the CEO, because that's how it's always been treated. And there are times when, uh, perhaps the letter of the law isn't clear, or hasn't been clearly, uh, followed. But it is, it was great historical precedence for doing all of your job. Now we just need to have a little set will substantiate and backup, just exactly what your position's been doing for the last decade, several decades.
Right, okay, well, I just make one comment. I mean, if the board so chooses, they can, uh, you know, bring that to the agenda and do that, but. Uh, until that time, I'm going to continue and step back. Aaron?
So let's kind of look in a little bit into the past and, there I go saying quiet, quiet part out loud. I think one thing that's happened in the past on this board is that presidents have been put under a particularly enormous amount of pressure. And held and expected to act as pseudo-mayor in certain circumstances, rather than a. Equal in authority trustee along with everybody else. And I think that may be part of why so many times when we've had a change of the presidential seat, it's been less than peaceful, I think, sometimes. And when I think about how the most recent one may have been one of the only truly peaceful transfers of power. That's, that's impressive. I think this board is operating exactly as it should, as they're supposed to, and I think your willingness. To say that out loud is worth a lot, so.
All right, well, thank you for saying that, and, uh, I only meant that to be a quick note, so forgive us for the time. Wasn't technically on the agenda, so anyways, I appreciate everyone's comments, uh, so let's continue on to engineer, so.
So, I guess this, the motion would be to approve the, uh, operations contract. Uh, for Benish. Um, contracts spelled out in the packet here. If you guys wanted to do that, so you guys questions and discuss.
I will make, excuse me, the motion to accept the contract by vanish. For discussion purposes.
With a next motion?
One second.
Give me the seconds. Good, uh, discussion is continuing.
So the contract runs congruent with our discharge permit, so, uh, state issues are, uh. Waste water treatment plant discharge permit on a four-year cycle. And that kinda tells us how difficult it'll be to operate, you know, if there'll be special provisions put on us or whatever. They, they have that opportunity in year four to review our permit, and if things changed and there was more development, or there was more sensitivity to our. Discharge of the water, then they could say, I would wanna see phosphorus limits, for example, we don't have any right now, we wanna stricture ammonia limit or. EOD limit, so like, right now, for example, uh, we're able to, o- other than we're waiting on our E coli, but we have a. E coli that's like seven thirty or eleven hundred, so it's a pretty relaxed, um, amount there too. Um, like, we don't even, we're not, we wouldn't even be running the ultrafiltration or the UV in those instances. So the treatment process itself is along with the expanded lagoons and doing all that work. So, you know, as time goes on, that, I don't expect that permit to get easier, it'll be harder, so we, that's why we provision for ultrafiltration, UV. All those necessary steps so that we can get to through the four-year period. Or if there's just differences in the year, right, because we do have some seasonality in our permit. Um, so, so that's why the, even though this is both water and wastewater, um, it's tied to the wastewater one. Because the water one is a water rights permit, and once you're using it, it's pretty much forever, so. Uh, gives an opportunity for us to review, you know, and changes in the whole operations. And then inside here, the town board has the opportunity to review and, if there's things that need to do with that. Um, other than that, um. When we did our, um, that's our surcharge. The surcharge included in Waterworth, the cost to operate. Um, actually with this, because, um, we were a bit conservative on that, we will probably have enough to. Do operations and some sewer system maintenance within the well budgeted and the water. So, so this is all built into our rate structure. So that we'd be able to have, we, we took those numbers from Apple Springs, because we knew what cost them to operate the same plant, so. Uh, we, we built that in, so we know we'd be able to operate it, so it's all there.
So do I have any questions from the board members regarding this contract?
It, it's a lot.
Do you like to speak to the affordability, Anthony?
Yeah, so, um, so we use Waterworth as our tool for, or revenue, or cash model. Um, that creates the, uh. The revenue that we bring in compared to our operating expenses and capital expenses that we've got, any, any debt. It's all calculated based on that, and we have our, whatever, we, we only had to do a surcharge in order to close our loans. So we had the loan for the treatment plant, and we had the loan for, um, the state, right, for the Logan expansion. So we had to pass those resolutions when we did that, so we can close those locks. So when we did that, we, we, in the surcharge, we have, there's two parts, there's the surcharge, which is covering a hundred and ten percent, I think it was, or a hundred fifteen percent of the. Loan payment, and then we have our revenue, right, which is, uh, user fees. User fees cover our operating expenses, so we adjusted everything so that our surcharge is covered. Covering the loans, so.
So you think it'll be a wash, even?
It's in, yeah, it's all built, it's all built into our rate structure, so, um, and we were actually less than what we had provisioned by about twenty percent. So.
For the operations cost.
Correct. And we, we knew this was gonna happen once we finished construction, so. Budgeted for it.
Okay, you have any other questions from the board? Okay, any questions from the citizens on this one? Mr. Halsworth?
Sorry. So, on this then, um, with your monthly charge, I see the forty-one, twenty-four, fourteen, and then that's a twelve month, is what your break out is on that. And that's water sewer or just sewer? And, because you're gonna come from both departments, correct? You got the twenty-five, seventy-three, seventy-five, and one is a water system, and so is the forty-one, twenty, forty-two water and sewer combined? Or is that a separate line on it?
So. Yeah, um, correct, so monthly amount would be forty-one, twenty, that's wastewater only, and twenty-five, seventy-three is the water.
So what you're gonna be is roughly seven, almost eight dollars in a month?
Sixty. Sixty-six.
And then what you're saying, and like our water fees, for example, and, uh, loan that we got within, uh. Everybody's water rates go up roughly fifty bucks a month. On top of what we have.
No, we haven't done any of that.
But we're gonna be going up to that level. Is that what you're including in your fees on this, or will it be, like you said, the twenty percent left? Because when it was calculated out before, we used the whole two point two million, roughly, that was gonna be forty-six, forty-eight, a user would be more. To use that structure on that for the water alone. Then the sewer with what we were doing on that, it was going to be anywhere from thirty-eight dollars to forty-six dollars, or less than half the Springs portion of it. So I guess what I'm trying to figure then, and you're saying, we're gonna have our monthly surcharges from both of them entities from the state. Will cover this fee here, along with what we're doing on them charges with our user rates going up? Or have you done a spreadsheet on user rate cost yet, on what we're gonna go up on the water when we have the full bill out?
Right, so, so this contract doesn't impact you, the, the, the costs to the end user. Loans would, right, so if we take out a loan for two point two million, yeah, that would have an impact, right? But, uh, twenty-five hundred dollar per month cost to, for a licensed operator to operate your system, which is the law, has to be a licensed operator to do that. That's our, you're already paying right now for the water system. The wastewater one is, is, is more, because we have a brand-new wastewater treatment plant.
Right.
But the water, the water system's same price.
Okay.
So, for operation.
But we will have our user fees going up.
Yeah, that, the.
On both systems when we're in full capacity, right?
What he was saying earlier with Waterworth, that is our modeling software for the, and sewer. So when we did our modeling to calculate what our new surcharges should be that we passed in the early part of this year.
Right.
The operations cost were already built into those surcharges.
Correct, I understand, not at all.
No, user fees are gonna have to go up because of this contract, because the, the operations on the sewer side. Are covered already with the surcharges and the rate increases that we passed earlier this year. And, uh, the water side, we're already paying that, and so Benish is basically taking over its water side.
Correct.
Uh, on that end of it, so basically, we're already within budget to adopt this contract, if I said that right.
Yeah, and, and just to clarify, so the difference between a surcharge and a user rate, the user rate's based on the consumption, so how much water people use. Per thousand, for three thousand, that, that is what covers operations, so that we'll cover this. Surcharge, on the other hand, is for the duration of the loan only, so once the loan's paid off, it drops off, and that surcharge is gone.
Right, so.
Yeah, yeah, at the, at the end of the law.
Right.
So, so those are tied to two different things.
And that's why my question was. Directed for where the user fee is gonna go compared to this, where you said, well, we're gonna have a surcharge, which surcharge is coming from that loan. And I know you talked about a thread, where we were gonna be at, it's full build out of sewer, full build out with water. And then with the monthly, that makes sense that you're gonna stay at the rates.
Yeah.
Short of where we're at with the treatment plant, and that's where increases will come from. So my question to then, who will be your operator?
John, John Burckhardt.
Will be the one for the sewer and water?
Yeah.
He'll, he'll be down here doing novel testing, doing, uh, inspection on the towers.
Well, some of the water stuff is existing, and so I'll be working with our current operators, because it's, there's a transition period. And, um, there's different roles and responsibilities that we're gonna adjust as we go through this contract. But wastewater, John operated that, that system in Apple Springs, so it made sense to have him, and he joined Benish, um, two, two and a half months ago. So we, we operate up springs of the contract operation now. John had, um, an IT business and a construction company that he's handed off to his two sons, so now they're on their own feet, two feet, so.
And he's under you guys then.
Yeah, he's, yeah, because he does a couple of different other things too for us.
So with our current contractor, then, he'll be under your umbrella from now on, and liability or any of those chance and.
That's right.
That responsibility, and then you'll be doing all the reporting and sacred records and everything of that nature, so.
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, and I would just like pointing out too that John Burckhardt, who's gonna take over operations here. He did, I believe, previously run the treatment plant up in Apple Springs, that, right? And then he upgraded to a new one, so that's where we got our current one. And he was also responsible for bringing the treatment plant from Apple Springs to Hermosa, getting it installed and getting it up and running. So he's gonna be, uh, very familiar with our system down here, and he should be the perfect guy, I think, to be taking this role, so. And, uh, great, do we have any other questions from the audience or anyone else, Mark?
Yeah, I've got a question, you guys keep talking about raising rates and stuff. But how many surcharges, so, can you add, how many rates can you apply to people who are retired and on fix item?
Right, well, and so we did mention that this contract is covered under the current rate structure that we passed earlier this year.
But who are you preparing to raise? To Rapids, you called, or preparing the wall in the Underwood Keystone?
Um.
I've, I've. Our specific name.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean.
We didn't compare to anybody. We did what we had, felt we had to do.
But you're trying to modernize Hermosa with the same facilities, with so much larger entities you have.
So just so, I don't know if you're new here, but we were under, uh, we were under a consent agreement by the state. So the state forced us to make these upgrades of treatment plant, because they were deficient. We were having, we were having discharges. Yeah, so those, when I came to Hermosa, that was the situation we were in, we had fines, daily fines, and we were able to negotiate to waive those fines. If we got it done in time. And so October thirty-first of this year was the, the drop dead deadline to have all this in place. So, we're almost there. So, yeah, that, that wasn't exactly the wastewater. Um, when it comes to the water system, um, we have one functional well right now. So we need to have redundancy in our drinking water system, that's also something the state requires. And then the state had already approved us for a twenty twenty-two state revolving fund loan, which. state revolving fund loan, which previous boards have already passed by a resolution to accept. So it's a one point six five percent interest rate. So that's, those are the only things that we're doing now, is executing those previous agreements.
Yeah, and I, I would like to just point out, Mark, I appreciate you making that comment, because that's something that we always need to keep in mind. The impact that our decisions have on the citizens that we represent up here. So again, thank you for that. Uh, Dan?
Can I just kind of answer a little bit more, Mark, is, yeah, we're saying, and saying each structure, we already know with maintenance. But I did ask, I think, they need to provide a spreadsheet to show us what we're gonna go up in user fees as the projects are performed, that are being performed, and then that's when you're gonna see the clear picture of what we're gonna say, so.
Thank you.
Uh, do we have any further discussion on the matter?
I have a couple of questions. The contract under standard terms and conditions, two point two point two, chargeable time. Chargeable time for field personnel located away from the consultant's office. The consultant's office is where, Anthony? Okay. Would, would it, um, benefit you or the town if we gave you a small office, like, say downstairs? Would that be of any help?
So, in the hourly that I have in here, we, we have the travel from Rapid. And the reason that Rapid is still probably more, it just adds equally in cost, is because we have to take our samples to the lab. And that's in Rapid, so.
Go there and then back.
So, yeah, we come, we do our job, we leave to go home, we go back with our samples. I only charge you door to door to the office, so I don't even charge for going to Mid-Continent, dropping off on Deadwood Avenue. Yeah, I mean, um, I think if, I'm waiting for the treatment plant to be completed, and, you know, finishing the site. And we were just organizing some locations where I wanna see the UV and metering and stuff. I think we'll probably have enough room out there to, to do what we need to do. Uh, but yeah, we do need to get a space here, I appreciate that. But, yeah, this is really for when you travel for work, like, it's, it's gone for more than one week.
Yeah, that had me a little bothered too.
Be, if we're, that's for like DOTU jobs and stuff, they make us go on the middle of nowhere.
Which shouldn't happen with us.
No.
Right, okay. Yeah, because it's a, except for consultants has observed legal holidays, and I'm thinking if we have an emergency and we need you on a legal holiday, are you gonna be available?
Yeah, yeah, and we have a, we have it built into our, our rate.
Yep, okay.
Uh, scheduled versus emergency.
And then on two point three point two of direct expenses, laboratory tests and related reports, that's all included.
It's actually budgeted, so it's.
Budgeted, okay.
I give a budget for the year and everything.
And when you, a little further down in that paragraph, the consultants authorized travels for and and for consultants field personnel. So, other than John?
Yeah, you're not gonna get a new per diem, there's no per diem.
Just double check in here. Thank you, thank you.
Do we have any further, uh, questions or discussion? Uh, let's, we'll give anyone else a chance to speak, and then, on Dan one more time. Okay, Dan?
Um, so on your emergency a hundred and fifty, and all the events, is that referencing then what Linda was talking about, if they needed to right away? That's what the services were possible to them for you to come down?
Yeah, and, uh, so I, it, it basically is a troubleshooting task, which is an hour, right? So it's it's one hour, one fifty. After that, it becomes something else, either it's a repair task, or it's something we bring to the board. There's a certain amount that you can't spend before you gotta go to the board for approval, so this will give us an idea of what's going on, so we can report to the board.
Now, with my next question is what limits do you have before you have to import to the board and nothing costs? Is it about three thousand?
Yeah, that was already in the, yeah.
And then this is only for water sewer? This doesn't include building permits or?
Nope.
And, and that's an all separate?
That's all separate.
And you'll be also making that?
We're capped on that, yeah. We're all, a separate contract, which, uh, Neil and Neil and John share that responsibility, but Neil's in charge. So Neil's in charge of permits, plans, office support, building officials, so that's really his role. And he maintains the worksheet, so we know when things came in, when they're due, so we just report to him on that.
Thank you.
Did, uh, Linda?
And this will include, even though we don't have the WRT system up and running yet, this will include that also?
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll include the administration of it.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah. Hopefully, like you. Goes right through.
Exactly.
Very good. Um, so do we have any other discussion, any other questions? Uh, Shannon?
That's my comment, I'm gonna, it's, I appreciate how you've set this out, so we can see exactly the amount that we need to budget for this portion. So we know what to do with our budgets coming up in just a couple of weeks, so I think it'll be important. We need to, I'm sure we already have the paperwork on the general stuff, or the quote enforcement, general engineering.
Yeah, those are.
We just need to add the two together for our next years. Is there any benefit to waiting two weeks till our budget to approve this? I mean, it's all worked into what we are doing and needs to be done, either way we look at it, so.
Yeah, I mean, our, when, when did our just come through, Anthony?
Yeah, so, um, the schedule there was July twenty-third. So the contract was run July twenty-third of this year to July twenty-third of twenty-twenty-nine on the discharge for renewals. So that, that's what, those are the dates I used.
And what dates did we use on the other?
You.
The general engineer.
Oh, those are when I was hired, so I told her it was the anniversary.
Maybe not cover what we need to do, okay, ten months, once, but they're all
Yeah.
Easier for you, maybe it's easier for you to, like, let's work on it, but.
Okay.
Thank you, that was all.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, we had a nice, long discussion. Uh, Terry, can you please read the motion on the floor?
Uh, motion by Kramer, second here, to approve the on-call inspections, master service agreements.
Okay, motion to approve, it's on the floor, Shannon?
I'm sorry, I forgot to ask this, what this booster comes and everything that needs to be, that's later on in the, in the agenda, how's that gonna fall into this contract? Is that gonna be the?
So, those are.
All separate.
No, I, it's included, the operations of them, but, um, we don't have them yet, and, uh, drinking water loan didn't allow us to include those, so we have like about a hundred thousand dollar shortfall, and those were the items, and I kind of, I laid out the so we can put them in our capital expenditure for the Waterworth and see when we can afford to.
And then all those extra inspections and stuff to get it started on a routine.
That'll be included in the cost of that project, so, things like
Okay.
Yeah, capital improvements will be engineering and, and the cost of doing it, that's a set, those are like one lump sum.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Okay, uh, motion on the floor, motion to approve, uh, all those in favor?
Hi.
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 Do you, do we get a motion, Carrie? Engineer B?
Okay, so, um, within our, um, SRF and our grant for the, um, wastewater lagoons, um, right at the end there, when we got our bids in, um, there was about a hundred and nineteen thousand dollar, um, budget vote from Dakota Pump to build the panels. Panels run the pump station, it pumps from the big detention basin that we built over the winter into the treatment plant. Um, kind of felt that was a big number, but I wanted to make sure that that got in our drinking water, or I'm sorry, our clean water SRF loan, so that we wouldn't be paying in the pocket for that. But then I went and bid, I got better prices, I had to call back to Michigan, and I had them build the whole thing for a total of seventy-one thousand, seven forty, instead of the one nineteen, so we had a savings of forty-eight thousand dollars that was in our drinking water loan. Um, and the way I did it was I broke it up into three panels, because there's all different voltages. There was four hundred volts, there was some strange voltages, so that helped us to step down transformers in those panels. And we have one distribution panel, one panel at the pump station, and then one panel that is the odd voltages that are from the European equipment. And so this is that third panel, so I had to kind of do it in phases, so that they could get built and get here as fast as possible, so I'm now holding up John and Rob. Um, so this is the panel three of three, um, I put here a budget of forty-three, five seventy-one. Um, but that includes, um, the guy, the panel builder, to help us do a startup. Um, and I may not, if that's worth seventy-two hundred dollars of that total, and I might not have to do that. So if everything goes well, it'll just be thirty-six, three seventy-one, but I didn't wanna be in a situation where we're ready to go, and I don't have that support from the panel builder, and we're still well within our budget, so um, that'd be like a not to exceed, so it would be a motion to approve, uh, purchase of the control panel uh, for not to exceed budget of forty-three, five seventy-one.
I'll make that motion.
Motion to approve budget for three five seventy-one, done, seconds, any discussion? Seeing done, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, motion, Carrie.
And then part of this to, to keep that panel inexpensive, um, I have a nine hundred dollar level sensor for our our treatment, it's called a Dropbox, it's our rotating biological contactors. So, we, it was, it came from Apple Springs with a float because it used to just get pumps kick on, pumps kick off, pumps kick on, pumps kick off, so, um, with our new design, it's variable frequencies, so it just, it's a slow, steady pace, and so we need a level sensor to tell that level to stay where it's at. And that wasn't in the Dropbox, so it's, it's an, it's an add item, but it helps to smooth that out, and it's nine hundred dollars, so. A motion to approve the.
I'll make that motion.
Makes the motion, you have a second?
Second.
Here in seconds, any discussion on this item, Eric?
Just confirm what you're coming on this one?
The level sensor runs the pump station pumps, those big pumps, did you go out there and see those? They got them all, so.
Did I?
They're this big.
I know.
So we don't want them to blast into the Dropbox and all over the roofs and ceilings and
Yeah.
The walls, so, so that slowly ramps up the pumps, draws the water from the big detention basin and feeds the water treatment plant, so that level will maintain. It'll be constant level the whole time.
Very good, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Carrie.
Um, the three is, uh, we're gonna strike that, because I got that, uh, those quotes in the, in the other price, so that's, you can cancel that one.
And which, that was the price for, uh, B two?
Yeah, that was in number one, B one.
Okay.
Yeah, I got it inside there.
Alright, very good.
Got them to include that.
Skip that one.
That's it, so then, uh, C is the North Water Tower bid, so we had three bidders, um, as, I was expecting the bids to come in higher than, than our grant amount, um, because I had also the pump house in there, which is uh, something that's shared with the Madison well, so that was something that I knew we could always have paid for in our drinking water loan, when we do our well. Uh, but in order for us to properly bid it, we had to have everything kind of showing, right? So, um, so I bid it, and I spelled everything out in the schedules, and then I contacted the state, and I said, if I have to break this into a schedule A and a schedule B, because of our funding sources, would you be okay with that? And they said, yeah, that's fine, but we can't guarantee you that we might not make you rebid schedule B, um, depending on that, so, so that's not a hundred percent sure they'd make us rebid it, I, I used all their drinking water SRF, uh, requirements when I did it, and I advertised it and everything. Um, and we're like, so the low bidder was Quinn Construction, at eight hundred and thirty thousand, or, uh, seven hundred and forty-five. And remember, our Custer County, uh, grant is five hundred thousand, so schedule A needs to be basically five hundred thousand, or pretty darn close to it, and I meant like five fifty, right? Trying to renegotiate with them on schedule A, so I've asked them, because we got so close, I said, see if you can ask other tank manufacturers to bid on it, make it, make it more competitive, because I used the tank manufacturer that are, or our two tanks up here, the Aqua Store. I used that tank manufacturer in my specs, so then all the other tank manufacturers didn't give a price. Because they felt they would be, they would, or, or they would ruin, they filed a bid of that contractor that used their number, right? So I, when we had our pre-bid, I told all the vendors, um, if, if we come in higher than the volume engineer into our budget, so that our grant pays for that, because it's a hundred percent grant, it's no cost to the president, so, um, we're still there, we're darn close today. He was, it shaved off fifteen thousand on the, uh, foundations, because we did a little different design option, and um, he looked at an epoxy tank, it really actually only shaved off twelve thousand, it wasn't even worth it. I asked him if we couldn't expand to three hundred and some thousand, right, because I thought, well, maybe that's blowing things up. And he said, that's only a bad savings of fifteen thousand, and so that's not even, we're, I mean, to be able to go from a hundred and twenty-seven thousand gallons to three hundred and fifty thousand gallons without any new foundations or pipes or anything, so that's, that's not worth giving up. So we're real close, but it's just not gonna get it in time, I mean, up until like three-thirty hours. Negotiate, trying to negotiate with them, so, we'll get it into a schedule A, um, we had three solid bidders, so I thought we were gonna have four, so.
You gave us the price for Quinn, what was the price, and who were the other companies?
Yeah, I'll read all three, so first, eight thirty, seven forty-five was Quinn, then eight ninety-seven, oh five oh was Mainline Contracting. And then Barokar, Rob, our guy at the lagoon, he was nine forty-five, five forty-three, sixty. And I thought I was gonna have RCS, because they showed up at the pre-bid, and they asked more, more, almost half the questions, and and they didn't bid, so. Well, we had a good bid, I mean, and asked for that more, and for that darn close with schedule A, I think I'll be able to get it back here, get us approved, so.
So, uh, they all have experience doing this kind of work, and you have no problem with any of the bidders that?
Yeah, uh, Quinn is doing Big Blue and Box Elder right now, so they're, they're pretty, the low bidder is probably the most, one of the most experienced Rapid City area. Uh, I know Mainline's super experienced in water main and everything. Um, so they all had ref, good references, and then the other big thing is the tank manufacturer is, uh, does the installation of the tank. So they do the concrete, they do the excavation, they do the pipe work, so, you know, the one problem is, is these guys don't have a lot in it, that's theirs. So that's why I said, hey, the tank manufacturer can't come down, and they're holding this thing elevated high, plus there's an excise tax on top of that. Really, if that excise tax wasn't there, we'd, I'd be having you guys award it right now, that's how close we are. So, you know, that's what's kind of making this a difficult thing, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Yep.
So we're just waiting for that to come down, so we can.
Yeah, and I'll let, just to clarify for everybody, I'll let you know when we got it ready to go, you guys can, we have to do it in next week's. They have to make that a, being able to vote on, if you can maybe do that. Um, they have to wait too, there's no like, I'm constrained, we could do it at the next board meeting.
Yeah, well, for now, let's just put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Let's do.
And then, uh, we'll see what. And then, uh, we'll see what happens.
Yep. Alright. Um, Yields asked if I, he needed to be here. I said I could probably handle his portion, his portion.
Okay, great. Very good. So let's move on to planning and zoning. Um, item A permit twenty twenty five dash fourteen. So this one I'm familiar with. This was a whole permit that we had to get some, um, I guess you could say description from the contractor of the work done. We didn't have a, a good enough description. Uh, and so I ended up working with him via email. We did receive said description. And it's, I believe it's all in the package. So.
Does not require any action.
Uh, well, I think, I think we still need to approve the permit fully.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, uh, is that right, Carrie?
I believe so.
Okay.
So table.
Like depending for a long time, even though the work is already done.
Yes.
Yeah.
I didn't make notes in such a hurry.
Okay, Shannon makes the motion. The second, any further discussion on that? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Carrie's. Permit, uh, planning zoning B permit twenty twenty five dash sixteen. Fifth Street.
This was a kind of a temporary, uh, structure. They did, Neil did that report on it. Basically, what Neil said is the, if the board determines it's a structure, then the proposed placement will require variance. But if you don't determine it's a structure, then can be allowed. Supposedly there's a description of the carport that's been provided.
Yeah, I don't see it in here.
I believe it's one of the ones that you buy like in Menards, the metal.
I know me personally, I would require more information before I made a determination on that. I do know that the proposed placement according to the drawing here has no setback. Mark, it's shown right on the big lines. So I don't know if we could approve that. Uh, Linda, you had your hand up?
I was just wondering, uh, it's, I understand that it's like a temporary one, but how permanent are they making it? Did they put pylons in to attach it to, uh, you know, cement, yeah, cement to tie it off to so that it doesn't blow away? I mean, those kind of things. How, how temporary is it? And I would think they would have to have some sort of tie down where they're at. I mean, the wind blows bad enough to take it, blow it to my neighbor's house at my house. And up there it's even worse. So I would want that information.
Um, there are actually customers at the store. I didn't say, this kind of popped up. They use anchors. Apparently some kind of very deep anchors. Um, thinking about it now, I'll talk to them and see if they can give us like, uh, information like, uh, they probably bought them at Menards. So we should be able to get some details on. Yeah, I don't think, I think.
I think that the
Look at that.
The neighboring property is owned by the same.
Yeah.
So that was going to be maybe less of an issue, but, uh, the, the, the description of the, of the structure or temporary thing. We asked for it so that we know really how temporary is it. Yep.
Well, how safe is it also?
Either way, into the highway.
Yep.
But I would just also like to reiterate too, I think we're gonna need a, a better site plan that shows measurements and things of exactly where they would like to place it. So, uh, Shannon.
Um, my reading was right. I thought it's only two hundred and forty square feet. Oh, would this be considered informational and they need to find more variance rather than building permit? Since it's under the four hundred square feet we require.
Square feet for the staff.
Right, but the, you don't need building permit unless it's a four hundred square feet, right?
For the staff report, it says structures under two hundred square feet.
Seven hundred fifty feet.
It's changed to two hundred?
I think hundred and sixty, isn't it? Or eighty, something like that.
Yeah, so, uh, Eric.
You want me to go ahead and reach out to him and just get like, uh, like I said, they probably bought it from Menards. They probably bought everything there, whatever it's buying. We could just get information on what they're buying and just get from there as far as the structure, the anchors and stuff like that.
So I guess the big thing is, is, okay, it is two lots. And so it gets built and it's right on the, I mean, it's right on the line. And then that other lot gets sold. Now that person's inheriting something that could be transitioning to.
They're, they're actually renting and where they currently live and they bought the house next to them and I think
Yeah.
Well, it moved that they want to put it over there with the high seat.
Oh, when they, okay.
Right, it's not the assembly.
Okay, so it's like, uh.
Yeah, that's worth it. I think the end of July they're supposed to be out of that.
Yeah.
The current houses. They were working, I mean, it was already there. They wanted to. There is, there is one there at their current house. And that's what, so we reached out to them and said, do you need us to turn that? Haven't gotten.
Like a temporary.
That is just, we do need a lot more information.
Yeah.
Before we can make any determination.
Yeah, he barely sounded like he was gonna be here. Yeah, so.
Ideally would be like, okay, his plan is he's gonna have it at this spot, then he's building his new house or whatever, then he's gonna move it to his new house. And he would show what he plans on building, where he's gonna move it to. And you guys would, and you would say, I'm gonna have that there in eighteen months. And then at least there's some sort of plan that's on the record of him saying he would, and you know, you can say it. If I don't have it out in eighteen months, then you can order me to demolish it or whatever. I mean.
We should have the site plan.
I don't know if it's gonna happen.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And that one won't have an issue with setback?
It will.
Like you.
It will as well.
The way I take it, yes, where they want to put it, yes. But I said, we just gotta have a lot more information on that.
Yeah.
So.
Eric. I'll go ahead and make a motion to table any further information regarding the structure being built, installed and developed, the site plan and specific location of structure.
And any other building permit information required? Do you think that covers it?
I think you need to be specific, right? Questions.
Yeah.
What if we're firing variance? Don't we charge that, that, that a separate one?
I thought it cost less than variance.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, Eric makes a motion.
One second.
Table down there. Seconds. Any further discussion? Yeah?
So I thought it was a hundred and eighty square foot, like, I don't know where the two hundred square foot.
I don't know.
Came from that. Cause anything over that generally qualifies as a building permit.
I just had a bottom number.
Standing informational. So I was guessing I'm locked on two hundred part two. It wasn't having.
This one's two, so it's over.
Over and above.
Same line, everything else. Anything that goes over that, I don't know. And then if he's on lock line, then he's gotta move it over to here. Quants like south and etc.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's, yeah, very good. Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Alright, motion carries. Very good. Um, temporary sign application FYI, that E plus three oh three.
I'm going to approve.
Shannon makes the.
One second.
With the seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none. Eric.
Is that why you need to make a motion?
Why not?
They have, I mean, I went back last year and they did. You know, it says FYI.
Just kidding.
The knowledge is that we acknowledge that.
Yep.
Okay, so all those in favor?
Hi.
I, motion carries. Permit twenty twenty five dash seventeen, uh, James Benlin eight fifty Marie Street.
Yeah, so this one I was called in on because it had some engineering aspect to it. So eight fifty and eight sixty Marie Street, um, well, the one parcel at one time and they were split. They have a access easement to get on the Marie Street. And technically speaking, the and any, in any other circumstances, that boundary is less than two hundred feet from uh, utility, city utility sewer. And so twenty sixty, I believe it was, was first back in the spring. Um, we said, well, there's a, there's a hundred foot wide, I believe it is, uh, liquid gas pipeline that cuts utilities and that, those lots. So it's a, it's a, it's a overly burdensome thing to make them connect to our sewer system. And then they have enough acreage, like three acres or something each to have their own set. But it's extraterritorial. So what happens is everything's done through the county. Well, the county has been really promoting Custer County, they're really promoting half acre lots and trying to figure out how to hook up to sewer systems. And so they kicked that back on the second one. Because they passed, when did they ask me to go with the update on our March? They passed the resolution for allowing a half acre lot, but they'd have to have a a kind of plan for sewer. So it's something that's on their agenda. It's a hot topic up at the county. So they sent it back and said, shouldn't you be making them hook up to sewer because they're within two hundred feet? Well, first of all, there's the gas line and the other guy was allowed to do his own set. Secondly, for the topography of that, it's basically a hill and you have one guy living on one side of the hill and the other guy's proposing to live on the other side of the hill. So just to have them hook up to our sewer, uh, both of them didn't really make a lot of sense. So um, we're basically just responding back by doing this to the county saying, no, we're not making them hook up, even though the state law would protect us from taking the hookup. So we're waiving them for extenuating circumstance.
Okay.
So this is a, a big lot and they're not putting the home or the structure at the close end and on this side of the, uh, pipelines, so to speak. It'll be on the other side of the pipeline.
There's really no land.
No land on that side. Not enough. That's what I saw. Yep. Thank you.
So is there any language on any of one of these properties that are putting that next to vault that takes off? That they will be required to hook up? Because if Meg bowlers use that next phase, then would they do cross under which is sewer line? Will they be annexing and looking up then?
Yeah, yeah, it would be. So when when this happens again, that would be a subdivision of a bigger parcel, right? And so depending on the size of the lots they're proposing and, and all those things, um, it could induce the need for sewer hookup, just so that they can develop it. Um, so that, that's a special case versus kind of two lot that were planted. So the county platted the lots. So that ship has sailed. Then it became building permit issuance. So then that was the second time they checked in with us because of our extraterritorial jurisdiction. And that was when we said no. So you, you would have two situations with this other example. First, the plating phase where they would need to show they have utilities. And then the second part would be then each lot. But at that point, they already have provided for engineering plan for the subject.
And then these two would be included on.
Um, well, these two would remain in the county unless they.
So they won't come in?
No, probably not. Didn't act to either. The only reason it induces an annexation is if they take utilities, the ordinance is saying uh, they take our town utilities, then we need to be able to protect the, the utilities from all kinds of exposure. So our ordinance protects us from them dumping stuff in the sewer or tying in randomly to the water.
Eric.
This particular case, just from like the economic standpoint, there doesn't seem to be any particular benefit crafting them to connect to us, especially considering they're using the, uh, rural water. Right? And then, um, it's, it's pretty much right on the edge of developed property. But as far as any future subdivisions, once we do this, it's, I mean, it's not like we're gonna go back and be like, all right, now, by the way, that how much money you spent on septic systems, that doesn't matter anymore. Now you have to really do that.
Yeah.
That usually comes into play when their septic system fails. Then when theirs fails, then they're close enough to either the new one coming in or ours and things can change at that time. But until theirs fails, there's no question really about it. So.
Right. And, and really, if we don't have a pipe on the other side of the lot closest to the house where they don't have to cross the gap piecement, then we may run into this again, which I don't think it'd happen because we're talking about a second, new septic system that's gonna have to be built here very soon. So.
Sure, go ahead and roll with the motion.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to waiver the requirement for connection to municipal sewer for permit number twenty twenty five dash one seven.
Good. Nice motion. Motion is recognized. Second.
Sure.
In a second. Hey, any closer discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Hi.
I Carrie's. Say it very well, uh, but till zero nine, zero zero nine, you keep four, we call it, you address three forty Whitney Street.
Just a one pager?
Yeah.
But so.
You know what?
What numbers do we have existing one here? It's like three.
Um, they did, this is, it's the top and it's on third.
Yeah.
This is the only one and then this is. Those are not true with the address so far and the address takes other.
Are these the signs by the county?
Uh, we had to call the county and get an assigned number for that because it wasn't one. None of those vacant lots down there have other than Steve Patton's.
Okay, so the county assigned this number.
And we need to, I want to approve. Or they already did it. Isn't this more like an FYI?
That's what done in the past. I just went back to what Jill had done in the past and she has have you guys approved a new address?
I'll make that motion.
Hey, Linda makes a motion to approve the new address. You have a second? Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
I, motion carries. Uh, planning zone seven F that attempt sign for the fair.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Linda makes the motion.
My second.
Seconds. All those in favor?
Hi.
Motion carries. Very good.
So we once again find ourselves revisiting our legal budget, but this time it's a little bit of a different situation. Uh, because approval of this claim pushes us beyond our budgeted spending. Um, so I will go ahead and make a motion to reduce the distribution to Hagen-Hag LLP by the amount of the August retainer, which is twenty five hundred dollars in order to maintain compliance with SDCL nine dash twenty one dash nine.
Eric makes the motion. Second.
I'm second.
Done. Second. See, any further discussion? Eric.
Would you like me to go over the law or pull it up or anything?
Uh, sure.
So pretty much, um, no municipal officer, no municipal government. So pretty much, um, no municipal officer, no municipal government may. Exceed the spending of the budget, that's pretty much how it reads, um. But it may not, you have to do a supplement before you get to the point where you're going to exceed. A budgeted item. Kind of tried to get ahead of us. Couple of months ago, kind of just couldn't, been getting kind of kicked down the road, but we're at the point where now if we. Did do this, it exceeds our budget, and. I've, I've been given the impression this has kind of been somewhat of a common practice. In the past, but, um. That doesn't necessarily mean it needs to be a, a common practice into the future to just exceed line items and then retroactively supplement budget. I think this is one of those things where we really need to tighten up, especially with how much money we're spending. If anything, we do with this, it's end up, gonna end up coming out of the general fund, and we need to be more careful. So I think we need to. Reduce by the August. Retainer for now, until at least we get through the discussion noted in item A of ten.
Okay, Linda.
I understand what you're saying, Aaron, and I understand the law in that. But I also, having. That sitting here and being in the audience for many, many meetings. I find it difficult to approve. A supplemental budget when you really don't know how much it's gonna be for. And that is why. Our town and. I would venture to say every town in. Or almost every town in. The state of South Dakota waits until the end of the year to do their supplemental budgets. I, I, I understand what you're saying, we're gonna have to have the money to, to come up with whatever it is. We've, we've always found it in the past, we've always handled it. In, in the, here we are talking about the past again, but, but it is a fact, it is a fact that it was always handled properly. Um, in the past, as far as the supplemental budget being done at the end of the year. Um, seems like it's usually like the end of November when we really. Uh, work on that so that it can be approved and everything by the end of the year. And generally speaking, it's. Um. Not just one. Line item, it's not just attorney fees, it's not just. Um, streets, you know, it can be a combination of others, so that when you're advertising this, it's. It costs a little less money, if, if we supplement now. Um, for that, whatever fifteen hundred, two thousand dollars, whatever it is, we supplement now for that, and then we have to do a supplement and a. Um. All that advertising, every, every two weeks would be an expenditure to the town that, in my opinion, is not necessary. Um. Am I correct on that, Terry, the expenditure for advertising and, and?
There are two readings in the ordinance for the first one, and then the final one has to be. That has to be published, either annual minutes or publicly submitted.
So then each time, each supplemental we would have, would have to be done, this is what I'm saying. Uh, and so that is why, um. It, it's done differently than. Than what the actual law says, I guess is the easy way to say that, I don't.
Eric.
So, the, so we're kind of. Like I said, I kind of tried to get ahead of this ball a couple of months ago, um, so as it stands now, the. Legal budget is gone, it was thirty thousand dollars, which accounts for twelve twenty-five hundred dollar retainers essentially. And in. Just shy of seven months, we burned our entire legal budget for the year, a budget that was calculated based on a retainer that was calculated based on. Meeting attendance, and it's completely hemorrhaged. And gone, um, we don't need to do it every couple of weeks, but, um, we do need to. Break the precedent of it being run until the end of the year, and then whatever the budget is, we just kind of supplement to account for that, where. We have too much money going out, and that burden, burden ended up falling back on the citizens, and we need to start changing those old habits that. We just can't sustain.
Okay, uh, Shannon, and then Kent, and then Dan.
Um. Re- regarding supplemental budgets. The way that it's done that way, Aaron. I mean, we could do a supplemental now. And we could try to budget again what we expect it to be. But then in the end, when that dollar amount isn't exact, you're going to have to do another supplemental. It's, it's easier to do one supplemental budget at, in January, when you've done your, working on your annual reports, even in February. To compare where you're at, what you actually spent compared to what you budgeted. And then you can supplement which ones you overspent, because it's gonna happen with regular engineering as well. Um. Any of those expenses, and that's why. Most towns do it at the end of the year to see where they're at. Their gain and their loss, that's why we, we. Have the budgets in August, and we kind of compare then to where are we at now, what do we expect there to be? And you have an idea what it's going to be, but you don't know specifically until the end of the year. And so those amounts can be specific, and the accounts can be specific of what you need to transfer over. I'd also like to mention that it's not unusual. For us to overspend in either of those departments, engineering and attorneys, because. We are growing, we have, looking at three tips, we have. You know, we have sewer project, and we've got the water project going on. Um. We need that stuff reviewed by people, the amount of permits that we're going to have, and we have had more, what number are we on already, was that? Twenty-seven? You mentioned seven.
Seventeen.
Um, and the other reason. It, it always happens as well when you have new employees. And that's nothing against the new employees, it's just general that they need to go. Higher up to have stuff reviewed more often, more phone calls, more questions, and that. It's part of the process. You know, when your employees have only been here, say, under two years. I think that that's expected, that those. Those two accounts specifically are going to go up.
Okay, and Kent Dan and Eric.
Um. I spoke to. Three of our finance officers and, um. Yeah, to. Linda's point. And it's common practice in small towns especially. Especially ones that have growing pains that. We don't know in one year or the next what kind of opportunities or problems are gonna present itself to have to spend money. So we ask ourselves, do you stop spending in the middle of. Whatever calamity or opportunity you're pursuing and addressing. Because you don't have the budget, but you gotta wait for a month, that ordinance, it's nonsensical, it doesn't work that way. In fairness to Aaron, he lacks historical knowledge of how this government runs, and most other ones were.
And point of order. Mr. Daras, be recognized.
Yeah, I guess, keep it quick.
Yeah, so first and foremost, one part of Robert's orders is that all discussions and directions are to be pointed toward the chair, and the purpose of that is to maintain. Decorum, it is a breach of decorum to specifically identify another officer of a municipality. That is an ethics consideration. And beyond that, we are discussing. Claim for Hagen-Haggell LP. A, a very, very apparent and undeniable conflict of interest. If a member of that law firm were to be allowed to get, engage in excessive discussion on this particular matter.
Oh. I mean, he's not gonna be voting on the situation, but I think he has the right to. Justify. His continued service to the town.
Not as an officer of the municipality.
As a city attorney, uh. As president, as a city attorney, is a, is a question that sometimes you see. Uh, strict interpretation of the law, if it is the strict interpretation, then so far I agree, it does appear that way because there should be. A appropriation for. Cat line item categories, quite simply, that's not inaccurate. But in. Practical, uh, the practical matter is, and that's why I need to end this a little bit further. Is that the way it's done is that these expenditures get made above and beyond projected amount that were, that was set at the previous budget. And then it's reconciled at the end. Now, this is not just something that Melissa has done willy-nilly, you got other, other municipalities do this, and reconcile at the end. And the legislative audit, uh, is. Is, uh. Fully aware of it and has, does not disapprove. That's all I got.
All right, thank you. Yeah.
Thank you, Alan. And I have to say, with all the years of experience and what we've been involved with, in the same circumstance, that. You don't know until the end of the year, in a natural disaster, or with a new board, is what we have now. That there are so many legal ramifications that if they're not legally handled, the board can lead itself into a legal problem that's a liability in the whole community. So having that legal representation of communities until a board gets more established and. More experienced under the circumstances of where they're heading is huge, so. We've always had with municipal lead meetings and district meetings that we might give every community that we've ever been involved with, with our areas, all. Going to the same circumstances, and it's great timing where we've got extra road projects that aren't gonna double or triple our expenses down the road. Or any other water sewer engineer expenditures, you know, we had a treatment plant came into play that was never expected, we have a pumper truck that was never expected. You know, all of these items are all items that are brought in as they're an advantage to the community to take advantage of them at the time. And the costs of their timing, so. To do it at the end of the season, which has been a practice still over twenty years. Has never been a legal issue because every community does, every community has no way to budget it, and it's hardly run a business in the same circumstances, businesses are the same way. They can never predict what's gonna be. So. That's not a legal statement, and that's not a true statement, how government has been known and, and continues to be. That's what you said, everybody in this district. Operates the same way, and every audit. Has been a good audit, and nothing has ever been dinged because of it, for how we've operated, and that's huge. Because your audit is what the whole circumstance is gonna be pointed out in every circumstance, Shannon knows, Linda knows. All the way through it, so it's not a bad operational step.
Okay, Shannon and Linda.
Um. I agree with, wholeheartedly with what Dan said, but. Also, um, we're not saying it's not important to keep track of it as the opportunities come up. Um, and we, you know, made supplements when we need to for, um, say, the purchase of the truck, because we know that there's no added. Purchases throughout the year, so we can do, you know, supplement for that item, it makes sense. In this sense, when I mentioned budgets. And we get our financials, and yes, we keep an eye on it, and see where we're overspending on it. Um. I'm not saying it's not important, it's just functioning, especially for the finance officer, to do it all at once at the end of the year, then to play guessing game every quarter. And readjust it, on, once you go over.
Okay, thank you, Shannon.
Yeah.
Uh, the other thing that I want to mention is that. Um. I, I'm not saying this is where some of the money's gone, but I can see where it could, could have been. Um, spent for this reason, we still have a finance officer that is, is not fully trained. Um, does not fully. Fully know her job, she's been here over a year, year and a half now, and is doing well and is still learning, and, um. And so, um. I, maybe when, when she has a few more years under her belt. And i- is more educated with the laws and, and our own ordinances and whatnot, there would be less, less calls to an attorney. And the expense may not be as great then, too. And I'm not saying that you have called him a lot, I have absolutely no idea, but that is one thing, when you have a very experienced finance officer, they advise you a lot. So.
Okay. I'd like to throw my suggestion in there, um. From my experience, my years in the law enforcement, dealing with finance officers throughout multiple departments that I've been with. She's actually more competent, there it is, than any other finance officer I've dealt with, so in my opinion, she's actually very, very competent. So I'd like to put that out there that I've seen and witnessed this, so. All right, thank you.
Everybody keeps talking about in the past or whatever, well, I, I do know there's over four hundred thousand dollars laying out there on Hagen-Haggell. In a water sewer line that came out of our general fund. But the citizens had no say so. Of where that money went. Do we not get a say so if the attorney thinks they're gonna come out of the general fund?
Question.
I mean. I wouldn't pay a lot of bills.
Attorney fees always come on the general fund.
Are they?
Didn't professional fees, the regular professional fees of our engineer and attorney law enforcement. EPO, they all come out of our general fund. That's how they're budgeted for, and we're going over because. We have more issues coming up, growth, three new tips coming up, we have had to redo a number of ordinances.
And they're not done.
For reviews and contracts. And projects, it, it's just more than we expected, but I don't think that this. I didn't really get into the cost of, of it, but the. You want to. Restrict his payment until we have a supplemental budget, so I was talking more on the supplemental budget and the process, and it's not in the olden days, it's. The current process of. How the town operates in the most efficient way. It's saving Terry time as well than asking her to rewrite an ordinance every quarter. And publish it for a reading that we don't know specifically until the end of the year how much more work and it needs. I don't see withholding any payment for, he has not done any work that we have not asked him to do.
Okay. I think, I think this is kind of. Very much heavy into the, the, the. Running on precedent, but. That's, we've, we've already come across numerous situations, and it seems like every time we turn around, there's another one where. Something was handled a certain way in the past, and we're chasing our tails trying to, trying to correct it, and. Money is another thing that we've, we need to curb the. Trajectory, um. And I don't think it's just turmoil, so I think it's, I think it's gonna be a thing we're gonna see in a lot of us, other municipalities, counties, states, federal government, I think. More. Responsible budgeting and spending is going to be a greater focus, it's already happening. And, uh, so we can say how, you know, we've kind of just done it a certain way over the past. Here, and we, you know, we've gotten away with it, for lack of a better term, or we can say this is an opportunity for us to lead the pack and. In another situation and say, all right, we're gonna move upward and onward and do this better. Possibly sounds like even better than any other local municipalities, which really sounds like a nice idea. Um. But the principle of it is, the whole, the whole point of this discussion wasn't about why we're spending, why we spent, what we're gonna do in the future, it's about, there's a. And I could bring it up if you wanna read it, or, you know. There's law that says we're not allowed to do this, the statute, it says we're not allowed to do this, so. That's, you know, I just.
Does that apply to attorneys specifically only?
We are not allowed to approve a claim that exceeds the budget.
Or any claim that exceeds. The current budget of any fund.
So I have a question, are we on track to having to do a supplement for next year? In any department?
Well, so like the engineer. Budget is over and the sewer fund, but those, we have the ARPA money coming in, and the FRA fund, that is a bit of. Reimbursement, so that'll be like an auto supplement, if he wants to get that full sum, full transfer. That's an auto supplement, so.
So do you expect those, um, balances to be zero at the end, by the end of the year?
If. Hopefully, if I can get the, um, I mean, I just submitted three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars to get reimbursed. Which. Yeah, it's not going to cover the whole sewer, so I just want to do some others and ways to allow the submit for that.
So you did say we we are going to have to do a supplement next year for something?
We almost always do have to do a supplement at the end of the year.
Yeah, so I mean, in that case, we will have to approve the claim that will exceed the budget in some way, right? To get to that point. So yeah, just, I mean, I just wanted to understand if this, if we're only talking about one light item or we expect this to happen in other areas or things like that too, so.
There's another area, and this is kind of another thing you might say. Put us in a position to a certain extent is our contingency total is zero. And as my understanding, that's been a historic of practice. My understanding, up to five percent of your budget can be set up as a contingency. So in such a case where you're about to overrun a budget, you don't have to do an ordinance. You can do essentially a motion to transfer, but that historically has not been something that's been done. So just kind of thinking that change is good. And this is a example of where we can make change for the better and break a habit. If we don't, if we don't do anything now at all on this motion, it's kind of seems like what's going to play out is it's going to go on business as usual. And at that point, we're going to be excess twenty to thirty thousand dollars on the legal budget by the end of the year. It's actually doubling it.
I mean, that's if we continue with this burn rate with that.
And just kind of to elaborate further, one thing that I think may have been an assumption when this twenty-five hundred dollar retainer was set up is that that twenty-five or dollar retainer would automatically cover meetings, attendance. But this bill, it doesn't go back, it doesn't even cover all of April. It doesn't include this meeting, which means essentially this meeting is minute by minute possibly exceeding our legal budget even further. So regardless, moving forward with this very open-ended, here's, here's, here's a retainer and we'll cover the rest later. We need more structure. We need to structure that. I think we need a fixed amount for meetings and we need we need to do this a little more on the point, especially because there's another statute that states that any and all legal services must be made through resolution or ordinance where, as far as I understand, the current legal agreement was made with a motion, which seems to be in and of itself violation statute.
I would, I would suggest a motion to allow Terry, direct Terry to create the supplemental budget. Now that we have a number that you think thirty thousand, additional thirty thousand to overestimate if not, pointing forward towards the attorney. And do it the correct way if you're willing to wait for payments for a meeting. All right, the next meeting, I'm sorry. If you're willing to wait. So that would be my ultimate. There's not a motion on.
I won't recognize that motion until we clear this. So we have any other discussion on this matter? There is seeing none. Terry, can you please reread the motion?
So, well, Terry, it's second by Donna to reduce the distribution of the claim from Hague and Hague by twenty-five hundred dollars for the August retainer. As per.
To ensure compliance with SDCL nine dash twenty-one dash nine.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay, we have one eye. All those opposed? All right, so motion available? Okay, so we're still, we're back on claims. So.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve the claims as presented and direct Terry to go ahead and create a supplemental budget so that we stay within compliance of the law that Erin referenced regarding our attorney professional fees to get us through the end of the year.
Terry, copy that down. Is there a second to this motion? You carry a second to it. You got it, Terry?
Improve the claims as presented and then allow finance officer supplemental budget to stay compliant. Get us through the end of the year and that's all.
Create a supplemental budget for attorney professional fees to get us through the end of the year.
Would you like to add any other departments that need supplemented to be added to that?
That's a good idea. Let's amend that too. Well, she's getting ready to go onto budgets.
I I know. This is a busy, busy time for.
Over are actually not going to be formal because we have money coming in.
Don't really know yet. Okay, all right. So we don't need that then.
Attorney professional fees and any others that you might find, Terry?
We have a meeting on the floor. Let's go Linda then Shannon.
I I'm just thinking that in way of maybe helping this to not happen, that maybe we spend a little time at the first meeting of every month and see where we're at, what we have already spent per legal in the in the first part of the month and what we think we have coming ahead of us. And if we spend a little time talking about that, maybe we can save a few bucks, you know, by talking about it ahead of time. Just just look up.
Okay, I would, I would also wonder if we should consider directing legal to inject with us after the retainer has exceeded or any, you know, additional costs and those are four. And just throwing that out there, that might be.
Before, I mean, logically, it would have to be before they're expended. Right, right? So, yeah, we can say, okay, you're at the twenty-five hundred dollar retainer. And that's and it wasn't identified specifically for the required free attendance, just to cover the attendance at meetings. That's first discount amount for each month of legal services. Whereas Spike wasn't able to make a meeting or something. And then, of course, that would be, that that would accumulate to next month if it wasn't, it wasn't here, exceeding the amount they exceeded the law worked.
I didn't want to get anything specific, but I just wanted to say, you know, we never know when things pop up in the community. Could be a flood tomorrow, could be the lawsuit headed our way that we don't see or something that happened in the olden days.
Or tomorrow, might as well.
And again, I like to point out that we're not just willy-nilly spending away. We are specific in what we ask you to review and bring back to the board. I don't think that we spent any unnecessary money. I think it's all been necessary and we just need to supplement for it. At the end of the year, it'll have to be done again, you know, go through all the funds and and do a final one. But until then, this will get us through to the end.
Let's go down then, Erin.
Thank you. Linda hit it right on the nailhead too, with a lot of times with the attorney, if we have an agenda that didn't look like there was going to need to be a lot of legal involvement, we would allow Mr. Hague to have a matter of, or if there was discussion of legal involvement in it and a discussion within that his office a lot of times and not having you come down here. He can give you the answers on any of the subjects and provide a written email to how advise you to move forward with any of the subjects that you might have discussions of and say, um, attendance of coming down, not that we don't like to see them here and the boldness of the representation and backing up of the board. Because sometimes there are ways then to help work things that way through and help the board solve or if it's going to be a normal agenda. And not a lot of legal questions and answers you need to get happening. Then a person can sometimes say that way too.
And to that point, if I am over here, the board president or finance officer oftentimes in the past would, you know, we call him. And it's like, we probably got it covered up this this month or he only had this one question that we know is going to come up. What do you think on that? But don't worry about coming down. That's, that's totally fine. I don't have to, I'm not insisting that it must be here.
Okay, Erin, then Phil, you had your hand up?
So one thing that's been said a few times that really isn't, I think we need to make sure there's clarity on is not one hundred percent of the items that have been built into the legal budget this year were ever requested. And not, I don't know any that were ever the result of a a direction by the board through motion. I can't recall, there may be a few, but I can't recall any. And some were done completely without any contact at all with board members before taking action. So one thing I would say perhaps is any considerations for a future legal budget. I think the most appropriate thing to do would be establish a fair rate for meeting attendance because, I mean, it's, you know, it's essentially not the same as hardcore legal work, from what I understand. And then a separate, separate part.
And it's hearsay of whether each specific item was requested by the board or the finance officer.
I I know one such instance, and I think it was a miscommunication, but let's just, if you can kind of wrap it up quick and then.
Yeah, 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 that's fine. I just want to make sure that it's, 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 you know, clear to, clear to everybody. But as I was saying, I think a specific perhaps value for each meeting. And I think a good practice would be anything, as we do with engineer, there's up to a certain amount of spending that can be done without an action. Perhaps that's an appropriate thing. We might set a a situation where there's a certain dollar value that cannot be exceeded without a motion supporting it. You know, just the kind of standard things we do with engineers, with contractors, with basically everybody else we write checks to, to where they need a motion on the board before they can bill us. I think that's kind of a basic fair fair point to have in place.
But he he also kind of falls under the you know, our contractors and so, you know, that I think is that amount that you're talking about, right?
That would, that would all need to be in a contract either by resolution or ordinance.
I guess my question would be, if you're paying a twenty-five hundred dollar a month for your payment, is that just retainable services or are there any services provided underneath that twenty-five hundred dollars a month?
Yeah, yes, there are. You can sweep that.
Yeah, the original proposal, actually the proposal that was accepted was a it's ten hours and plenty of services, two hundred and fifty an hour. And then thereafter, it goes to two seventy-five an hour beyond that first ten hours. So in in point of fact, I mean, I don't know that, there there have been some meetings that go beyond five hours, quite rarely. So it it more than covers the two meetings plus a few hours additional. So I do try to well document things. There are a lot of things I do not charge for, you know, just call the question. And under the ordinance, the town's ordinance, but it does say, it's a system of state law. It does say that any board member can contact the city attorney with a question about matter, but it is only the town board president that can direct the city attorney to actually provide a written affair. So that would be just one more example of from the executive of executive rights and privileges that you have responsibilities, I should say.
Is there any further discussion on this motion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor?
Could I have that read back, please? So it was a motion to approve the claim as presented, presented and then to allow the finance officer to prepare a supplemental budget or attorney fees and other budget items.
Any other?
Any other?
Any other?
To get us through the end of the year, to stay in compliance.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor? Okay, so it looks like we got three claims there. Law enforcement, marshal report.
Um, so pretty much this the, this entire week has been a little hectic, so it's our last week. If you have any questions on any, go ahead and shoot them now. If there was a board or anybody in the audience here on just anything in particular, and then I can give more of a detail on what's been happening.
It's a good question. So I I heard that you built a missing gate. Is that true?
Oh, yeah, we went looking for him. He took off from his parents' house from southbound, headed north, going to Rapid. We come down setting. I am trying to come back from the tracks. He was getting messed with by cattle, so he decided not to walk tracks anymore. So we snatched him on the freeway right there in problem. And then we had another one. We had a manhunt that lasted like thirteen hours for an individual out of Colorado. Robbed a store, stole a car, came through, stole another car, tried to hide up in the hill, made it past the hill, we got him again there. So he got snatched. I mean, he's a three striker, so he's done for sure. And then we had another incident down this street here. We had a high-speed chase. Oh, we actually got, we had a multiple high-speed chases recently, actually. I think it's like three going on right now currently. They don't just need room, unfortunately. We had one where it was, if if you guys aren't going to like what I'm about to say, but it was really not a fine situation to deal with. Individual running from Rapid City, trying to get away from them because they're here, hundred and twenty down this road. We get chased. We get up to forty, almost to the rest. He's throwing, well, again, he's throwing chunks of crystal powder. I wanted to try to stop us from Jason, as we collected, but we weren't going to stop. So he got caught to just outside the road on the ground. So, and that was another one. That was pounds of our bodies. So there's that on. And then I'm just going, anybody goes down the road, stop them if they're going either too fast or they don't look like they belong in the area and I've never seen them before, I'll stop them. Because usually there's a, there's an issue with their vehicle, I said, a tail light or an obstruction on the plate or I got a windshield that's, you can't even see out the front. I would have used like leaning, you know, just leaning, basement turret style. So I'm getting a, getting a lot of those and a majority of them aren't even people from the town. So. So I'm getting a, getting a lot of those and a majority of them aren't even people from the town. So we had a lot of influx from Rapid. And the rest, so it's a kind of a pain.
David, Linda?
So, um, I'm under the assumption that you did not discover these things happening. And so you got calls from either Custer County or Pennington County to help?
Uh, yeah, so we would get the radio mercy on for all responders. And because it's that's through my territory, I'm able to jump in there and proceed because it's immediately becomes my problem. Because it becomes a safety issue. Because he could possibly decide that, oh, I'm going to go here and pull up in somebody's house because he wants to hire residents here. If you're one of you guys, he could possibly pop in, hold you hostage, you know? So if he's got that kind of stuff on, you don't know what the difference makes, so.
I would like to thank you for, for your hard work, woman. But also for your dedication to, to this town and, and working with. Both Custer County and Pennington County. It is, it is awesome to have that within our city limits. And I greatly appreciate it.
I've been working with, uh, Keystone Rescue Rescue also. I was about to add that. We had an incident in the building following a guy. I got there within two minutes. It was heated. We got him stabilized and then we finally got EMS up there. EMS came from Rapid, by the way. And it took 45 minutes to get, you know. You know, like the actual proper EMS there. But we stabilized him until we could move it. Because he would, it felt directly hot. It was like a big old frame metal building. It was like a 35 foot tall thing. Hit him when he stepped over. I don't know. It looked like it may have broken technically back, so we were waiting to see some.
And that page actually got from us because it didn't come through you.
Yeah, they didn't want to put the radio until like after the back. So they get it from that. So I thank you for that.
Wow, good job, guys.
Have a question. Are you finding that we're a little bit more busy than what you thought?
Well, especially since you guys have the 79 here and you have 40 this way and 40 on that. It becomes.
And 36.
36 is a big castle, but we've been getting just right here on our little main street alone. It's been. In an unfortunate hub for interactions that are negative to the town, so. But I'm doing my best, uh, running my shifts as hard as I can when it comes to that, especially when we get like our calls for. Like we have BOLO out for a particular vehicle. I'll sit out here. I'll go post up on 79. I'll do my runs. And then I'll come through here and see if I can't catch somebody coming back in. If they decide to arrest from the other end and comes through our state, our whole town again. So doing my.
Yeah, they're entering into, into the town.
Hey Eric, real quick, um, so you're writing reports on all of these, right? And they go into the.
Well, I'm waiting to get that set up with, um, it's called Zergar. So it's the law enforcement system. So we're going to be working on that here pretty soon. I just have to go up back up into Custer and fill out the thing for it within their town. So that way it operizes and I can utilize it everywhere else.
Okay, and I would like to ask the law enforcement committee is, is part of. His interaction with you guys to provide regular reports on his activities? Okay, so we have a record of all this, uh, at. Accepting the, uh, recording here. Eric?
Yeah, yeah. And part of it is, um, uh, he's keeping track of what he, what work he's doing with Custer. So if the day comes. Um, we may look at seeing if, if he's benefiting them enough. Maybe we need to negotiate for them to help out with his alibi and we can bring him to full time.
They're also moving multiple bosses, unfortunately. So a lot of them are moving outside of the place and some are just going to retire.
Okay, uh, Linda?
So I've, I've heard, I don't know where I've heard it from, but I heard that there was a possibility of need of, of maybe a different. Building for you to be in, a different, and I think we should discuss that. I don't know if you have looked. You're okay. Well, I thought it was a legal issue as far as, um, access into the offices.
It is when it comes to the storage room down there, uh, somebody who is in office that actually, because it's, it's within my office and I hold. Center documents in there. I also hold evidence. Currently it's that story evidence in a, in a harder locked situation because of that, um. If somebody else has access to it and I go to court and let's say they find out that there's other individuals that actually become invisible and thrown out and then my evidence is just nonsense. Like it's on the Brady list for being below graph, you know what I mean? So it just becomes a thing.
So the opposite's directly beneath us is what we have had law enforcement in in the past. There is a room in there that was totally, um, sealed up, safe, locked. And it, the windows are barred. And maybe we need to, uh, the town board needs to look at that and see if we need to move law enforcement to that side. And then trade off, it's, um, the worst of it is the, oh, well, not the worst, but the library is in there and. The feeding South Dakota, whichever nonprofit that is. And we could move them over and then have you in there. And so I think as a board and with your, yeah, just swap it out. So think about that. Look that over.
I'm okay with what you're saying. Um, I have no issues with it. Uh. I mean, I definitely am bumping up to opinions on what, uh, you want to say, but currently, you know, because it is the town, so.
Well, I just don't, it, it's not a good thing if, if you cannot, they cannot take your evidence. Because it's not in a secure situation. We need to change that, I believe. So, and.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I think maybe some of this kind of originated from the back corner room. There's a lot of stuff in there that has absolutely nothing to do with law enforcement. And it really can't be allowed to stay. We can't allow a situation where someone who is not. Law enforcement is accessing a secure law enforcement area. So I think maybe where this discussion kind of oriented may have something to do with that. So we're going to have to find another place to put those items, um, that's a little less obstructive. And as far as moving his office, that's currently the only place where we have a separate locked evidence room. And if anything, we need to. Go through the security because currently it's not. We don't really need to come in a crazy detail, but there's, there's security issues that don't necessarily need to be discussed in public that need, need to be reviewed.
Yeah.
That's just, um, yeah.
Okay.
I, the room you're talking about is currently held by, um, Black Hills Recovery, um, and. Uh, it can be moved, yes, but has anybody actually been in there? I, I.
I don't know if I'm supposed to be like that, uh, beating the whole thing, so they just. Five, they're going to be right by my door.
So until this situation is resolved, um. I'll make sure that whoever needs to access that room, which is seldom, um, they will contact you so that you can be there at the time.
Yeah, I also did set up a, uh, ring camera down there. So I will operate if I'm not about, or I'm not here. Just call me, I can activate it.
Okay, thank you.
Also fine. But as of right now, evidence is secured in another location and it's a, it was currently there. I'm trying to figure out how to dispose of evidence because it's like. From 2011, so I still need a proper disposal of it because I don't want to just get rid of it because somebody will come up out. It's all.
Okay, wow, very good. Uh, do we, do we have any more questions for the marshal? Uh, yeah?
I'm sorry, great point, Marshall. There's, uh. Any evidence that for some reason still not always like from 2011, any evidence? Is there proper reference to the case that was associated with and what agency prosecuted it?
It has writing on it, but from what I've looked at, there's nothing connected to it. It's like old, old, so old that they're kind of just like.
Okay.
Okay, I can show it to you later if you want. I still have it locked up.
Oh, it's not like DNA sample?
No, no DNA. It's, it's like paraphernalia of particular, so. That's why I was saying, look, if it's from 2011, that makes no sense to even need it now. Currently it's a significant way of law enforcement.
Right, right.
Most popular way to get rid of that?
Well, you can, you can destroy it once it's been determined that there's no assessment for it. Making sure that it's not, could not in any manner be necessary to be exculpatory. It's, you know, and, and that's very unlikely for the town to have a major situation like that. You're gonna. That's not going to probably happen, but that's what.
Well, if you have a problem, I'd use it on my eyes.
Another question I have is that someone, uh, the, uh, fellow shot through here 120, you gave chase.
As soon as I heard on the call, we jumped on it immediately.
And how far did you, did you follow?
Uh, we followed as far as we could and then we stopped, I think, just before the red, so. But I was with other parts of that as well. So it was highway patrol. We had Custer Narcotics and. Not Custer Narcotics as I was, Rapid City Narcotics and Custer County.
Just for the record, uh, our marshal brought us on, uh, forward floor with a police intercept and order, which obviously came.
Oh, yeah, it comes in really easy. It gets up to go, it's immediate tour because they like motors, uh, and gas motor, so.
Thank you.
We really left that one.
I think we can put an end to this defund the police movement, I'm just saying.
All right. But if there's anything else, any concerns from the public as well, for that too, and Chris is.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Moving on, uh, law enforcement, we request Benish to research the harmful parking options. Uh, Aaron?
Yeah, I'll take that. Um, I would just want to ask, uh, Benish to do a staff report on the. Possibilities of setting up parking right out here at the end of the building. Um, there are already some questions whether or not it's an option, but I just want to make a motion authorizing them to do that research. So that we can see if it would be possible for us to set up our marshal parking right on the highway so he can. Who he has much more rapid in and out to his responses and it's town property. So we're kind of getting a lot of I's and crossing a lot of T's if we can make that happen.
Okay, you're making a motion. Your second.
Second. Parking adding like a driveway right here so that he can.
Parking spot straight out the end of the building so we can zoom.
Perhaps people talk to the highway. Um, I, I don't remember the date, but I do remember this discussion and, um, the. Possible even improvement of this. Terry will have to search back in the records, but when, um. Jerry was president and at that time we were. Doing changes with finance officers and I can't even remember all, um. There was discussion of turning that into a parking area down there. And as I recall. We had it measured out and seemed like there should be three or four stalls, three regular ones, one with a, a compact type car. And. The only thing that I have to say about this is that right now. We're, we're also, I mean, we need more space here. And, um, the library will be moving and our lease is up with them in 28, 27 or 28? Don't know what month. Yeah, I don't remember either, um. So that is two years, a little over two years, whatever, depending on when the date is. But things will change at that time also. Um, part of the issues were, were down there. There's a water line there, sewer line. And, um, a capsule of. Time capsule, thank you, um, down there, which is, I mean, that can be moved. That's, you know, not a big issue. I'm just stating the things, um. But I, I mean, I think it's a great idea. And. I don't know what the study would cost for Benish to do that, but I also know we've been discussing money here. And as I, I don't believe that's in the budget or, um. Or it was even line item for this year. So I would like to request that Terry does some studying on. Uh, some research on when that was discussed with, uh, Jerry being president. Do you have that information already, Aaron?
Um, no, I hadn't, I hadn't heard that. That would have been before Anthony's time because he, you don't recall this being discussed.
Sometimes it sounds familiar with a compact car when you said that.
Yeah, I, and I, I don't know. I can't honestly tell you if that was before, um, KLJs or if it was after, but.
It was maybe I was here, but it wasn't.
On his own, yes, basically he was. We did the measurements and stuff. But I, I would like to see before we make any decisions on, on even giving. Anthony the permission to do the study on this. I would like more information on it from our past records.
Okay, uh, Aaron, then Anthony's in there.
Uh, considering this being directly related to legal, we have 3,500 in professional fees and legal that doesn't seem to be related to. Literally any, or not legal, uh, police, law enforcement, that doesn't seem to be related to anything else. There's 3,500 there, um, and other expenses. We have. Just left, that's what's left, 2,000 left. So I think it would make sense for whatever this is. That Anthony does would come out of the law enforcement budget since that's kind of what it would support. But I don't know if he's had like a, what would it be for like a simple staff report?
So, um, in the past with the towns I was engineering, the law enforcement, they had grants and. Things that they would get. So they, their like budgets were almost. I don't even know where all that stuff was coming from. And, I mean, we had money because in engineering we have utilities, right? And so the utilities kind of bummed us. With them, I could, I could have, I could instruct my grant writer at no cost to look up what grant options there are for. Eric, you know, to then pay for that. I mean, again, there'd be a match and I would try to conserve your budget that you have with them. That helped with matching funds instead of spending them on me. I, I won't charge to find potential grant opportunities for bringing to the board's attention. If you want to do that.
Yeah, yeah.
You do that all, all the time and then you say, yeah, we're not ready for that or yeah, let's do that.
Sorry, I didn't hear those up using your on-call.
Uh, no, I wouldn't. It would be no cost to have my grant writer look for potential opportunities for. Law enforcement to pay for upgrades to their.
Thank you. Uh, Dan?
Um, I remember I was still on board and doing. Uh, DOT didn't want to approve the approach going up because of the approach was already in and they were worried about the liability. And they stopped the whole project. So then that's when they were going to approach us about leasing and the parking right here. Here to just use the access and out of our property and make an arrangement that they were willing to be capable of. Work with them on that, so.
I'd forgotten.
I'd say everybody is looking at it, asking.
They should know the research, I mean, the research should tell you that.
Set them on the filters that were already on higher when it was done and designed.
Sure.
So Zucker at that time was not favorable on it. Said that verbally he would not approve it.
All right, thank you. Uh, Shannon?
Didn't he still there?
No.
It would only make sense. To put an access right here that. I mean, it's. It seems like, you know, if there's a distance between accesses allowed, it would need that. I know it is a state highway, but it's also our main street. So I'd be in favor of that and leasing parking in the future.
Yeah. Anna, did you have a comment?
Well, then. Uh, no, I, I, I had forgotten about, uh. That with the DOT, but we now have a new head of the department in this area. His name is Bruce. And he might have a differing opinion. It's worth asking after we have all the rest of the information.
Okay, Anthony. So then getting back to the motion on the table would be. To take the information that Terry's going to research and find out and then I can take that. It should have some illustrations of what was proposed. Go to Bruce. It's like one hour of my, it's less than an hour of my time to go and take that to Bruce and talk to him and say, what options does the town have? Put them off the table or whatever and then bring it back and report back to you. Plus the grant, all of the grant opportunities in that same time.
Okay, Eric?
I think I need to amend my motion then. To authorize, um, Anthony to collect documentation. Possible parking opportunities pursued in the past. And work with the grant writer from Benish. With a budget of. With a budget of.
One, one hour, it's, uh, what is it?
Budget five hundred bucks if you spend less, so we. Five hundred bucks from the professional fees line item of law enforcement budget.
Okay, well, Terry's writing, Aaron amended his motion. Do we have a second to his amendment? I'll second it. Do we have any further discussion on the due amended motion? All those in favor? Any opposed? So four eyes went through. Okay, I'll be carried. Very good. Okay, item nine C. Again, right there.
Motion to approve fifty dollars for the use of the community center for meet and greet with the marshal. Um, July twenty third.
Has it been advertised?
We just use petty cash and put it on the next. I didn't know anything about it.
Okay, so. Do you make a motion?
I just wanted to make a comment. There's meet and greet kind of slipped up on us with the vast. It, it, the day has been set, so I think.
Okay. Very good.
Couple of questions. What, when, where, I mean, community center tomorrow, where was it advertised? What is? What time is it at?
We had discussed this gently, informally, I think during a work session like last month. Kind of shortly after, maybe right around the time when we hired, hired and. We discussed this and it's just kind of just, I forgot to get the motion on the table, but it's advertised on the Facebook community forum. Been kind of telling everybody around town that I talked to at the coffee shop everywhere else. Pretty sure it's been sharing with people, you know, it's kind of the words traveling organically, so. But I mean.
But it's not posted up, post office or the town office or. In the newsletter. I'm just wondering if we can double it up or if it can be changed. Because when you add it to an agenda, you can have discussion, but you're not supposed to have a motion legally. But it's only fifty dollars, so. I would suggest if it was pre-planned to. Take it out of petty cash and put it on the next thing list.
Hold on to the point that I think that's a good solution. To just take it out of petty cash and not make it a formal motion. Because there's no place that I see that is properly advertised on the agenda this time, although I think it's a great thing. That's, that's, that's pretty basic requirement if you're gonna take any kind of official.
Okay, Linda then Phil.
Um, I, I think it's a great idea. Again, where is it? What time is it? Upstairs of the community center, at what time?
Six P M.
Six P M and our. Fifty dollars is for, I mean, are we serving cookies? Are we serving tea? Are we serving water? Are we serving anything? And I believe that it's already, it has already been posted somewhere. I think we need to carry through with it. But maybe we might have to have another one that is properly advertised would be my opinion.
Can I just save the headache and sponsor the fifty bucks and then you don't have to worry about it?
I was literally thinking that today, you know, if it's weird, I'm just gonna pay out of pocket.
I'll do that too and I'll split it with Bob.
Next time, this time I think we have to go through with how it was advertised. But on the next time we have one, I think that's probably a really good idea with having it. Heat, air conditioning, whatever. Yep, yep, I would agree with that.
Yeah, uh, I, I would.
So if you'd like to be that, Phil, I guess get with Aaron. And since he's organizing the event and then.
Oh, I'm not gonna be there because I gotta work now.
So what board member is going to be introducing and, and. And you're available. That's fine. I'm just making sure that somebody will be there to introduce him and, and.
I'm gonna try and make it, so. Anyways, yeah, but if you guys could consider planning another one, I think that'd be a good idea too. And we could advertise it and probably in the same way you did this one in a digital ways. And we can get another crowd of people that, that Eric can be.
For the next one, I think we should do like be like lunch with the marshal or something like a meet and greet or sit down and chill. We find a good. Then you will be can do that. They give more incentive also.
I know you and I and some others say at the Legion. So that might be a good, a good one there. Andrea?
Um, we would like to donate some money for some cookies and juice for your little welcoming committee there, Aaron.
All right, I'm gonna, like I said, I'm gonna wear, I think Donna as the chair really needs to take the reins on the. For the orchestration. I'll probably serve an ice cream and y'all hang out, so.
Sounds like you might have an intercommittee to speak here. Anyway, so, yeah, you guys would like to contact Donna then and.
We gave her money to fill, so he can live with Donna.
Can you get with Phil out of the meeting and?
I think I probably can handle that.
It's still a motion on the floor, so we.
Is there a motion? I don't believe a motion has been made.
Intermittent motion to approve the fifty dollar fee for the meet and greet.
I, I didn't think there was a motion on the floor. I think, I think the discussion took off before we got up. Okay, Linda, last comment and then let's move on.
I just wanna thank the citizens and business owners for, for. Donating, that's great. Thank you so very much.
And you too, Kent, offer?
Exactly, can operate, just very nice. Thank you all.
Okay, I said last comment with Linda, but you could.
Sorry, I was just wondering if, if you had to advertise on Facebook, is there a way to just get a printout so we can put that up in the wire or something?
Yeah, yeah, I'll put it on the counter.
Just try and get a little more awareness out there.
Probably drop one, Lena too. Yeah, I can scatter them around in the morning.
Alrighty, well, very good. Sounds like a great time we're gonna end up having, Dana. Look forward to seeing you there.
I'll need to notice the possible forum. Already past six, but it's better to at least.
I can't be there. I'll be at work. You'll be there, you'll be at work.
I can just hang out for a minute if you'd like to show up for a minute.
I just don't think that we should be pressured into, you can't be here. I can't be here. There's three of us. I know it's not twenty four hours, but it's better than. Someone complaining about it.
Alrighty.
Even if you leave right away, wanna show up, I'll scare you out.
So let's move on to legal. Um, I don't know, this is, this is a, this may be redundant with the passage of the claims, but. Um, so this is advisement or action regarding the attendance of the town attorney at all meetings.
And to reiterate that point as Amber brought up earlier too, and I echo to say, historically, we've done it that, that way often. It's just not gonna be a lot of action. Activity that's gonna be, we don't believe it's gonna require legal counsel, so we. We won't, we won't need you to know. So that's, that's more of the fine. I'll be on like on call type thing. Let me know a few days ahead if you can, if you don't need me.
All right, very good. Thanks, Kent. Uh, Shannon?
And let's make a motion to request Kent to notify. Terry and. Cal, Cal, um, when you're about to exceed the monthly amount, kind of keep an eye on that. I ask you to do that.
Okay, so Shannon makes the motion. Is there a second?
Sure.
Linda seconds.
In discussion with that, I guess I would have to leave that approval up to, then the president to. Um, allow, you know, when he says we're up there, but we still have, you request me to research this or that for. Cal to say, go ahead and do that, so that I get some before the next meeting.
You know, we may, we may have to add that to the. President now, just so we can kind of keep stuff transparent going forward.
Keep track of the list of authority we give you. I would suggest that be one of them.
Okay, well, uh, let's look into that and then maybe we can address that. Okay, so any further discussion on the motion? Hey, all those in favor?
Nothing, nothing true.
All right, thank you, Kent. Hey, motion, Terry? Very good, so let's move on. Public works, uh, I do not see Chuck here, so please.
Hopefully next time you'll be.
Hey, very good.
Doing good.
Yeah, that's great to hear. I know I talked to him, uh, yesterday, you both and you guys, he seemed like he was doing a lot better.
He's feeling a lot better.
Well, that's, uh, Aaron, do you have any street names or anything?
Um, I, I haven't checked in with Mark recently. I've touched base with him to see where he's at on getting that. The bear started on North Second. But other than that, the streets are basically on autopilot. I mean, they're still there.
Very good. Anthony, do you have any water sewer department updates? I wasn't able to talk to you or.
Yeah. So. We've conducted samples on our wastewater treatment plant. It's been running in recirculation and into the. Logan Seam, which is the nearest to Logan to it. And so we've got all the results back. Passing, we're waiting on the EOLI, oh, should have that. Tomorrow, I think, this week for sure. And then we intend on discharging as soon as we have all those. Those permits or all those samples passing. Panels for the wastewater treatment plant are what'll allow us to then draw from the detention basin where the wastewater is. So, you know, I think that it'll time out pretty well that we'll be drawing from the nearby Logan manually. And discharging and checking our samples and kind of getting that sampling process started. Um, and then, um, the panels will come in and we'll be able to draw from the pump station. At the same time, uh, the rest of the legit, so that's the southern portion of Logan, it's being completed right now. They were putting. The riprap in it, so that's getting close to being done. All the grades on all the tops of the berms are almost there, maybe just, there's just a little bit left. Around the treatment plant and then it looks like they're getting ready to put gravel, you know, driveways in, so. Beyond that, it'll be the topsoil and the seeding, that, that's it. And they got plenty of topsoil, so.
What action do we need to take to address the weed growth around the basin?
Yeah, I think anywhere where there's riprap, we need to be spraying that because that's. That's just gonna be there. We need to have kind of a maintenance protocol. On anywhere where there's still.
Is that, is that maintenance part of your operations or operation?
I think we had, didn't we have like some company that does spray? You had mentioned it. Oh, yeah, I would, I would find the necessary person to, to have that done. Probably try to have that on like kind of a reoccurring basis. Uh, specific time of the year when that's the best for weed kill.
So the administration is covered, but maybe not the cost of the spraying, so then. We'd likely have to approve that in a future meeting.
Yeah, um, so like the reason I haven't really gotten into it is because I think Rob, the contractor, is still kind of on the hook for. The site, you know, I don't wanna get in his way. Um, topsoil and seeding is all on him to the budget, so. I was trying to get to that point where when we're finishing, it's off, we've already got weed growth because all the rains. Um, then we can talk to him to see, maybe his guys will just spray. We provide the chemicals, he'll just spray it as he has to do some stuff anyways, so. So I was waiting to see on that, but, uh, yeah, then it goes into the. From construction phase into like a maintenance phase and then we need to, there's lots of maintenance contracts that. We need to go over and kind of, my plan was to put, do the summary for you guys. Because you have operations contract which you approved tonight, but then you have all these maintenance contracts, lighting. Snow removal, yeah, weed and, uh, you know, lawn care and all that stuff, right? So I'll try to do a summary of that. That way you guys can see who's, who's doing it now, how you wanna address it moving forward.
Okay, very good, Jen.
That would be very helpful with our budget meetings.
If you need help, lawn is licensed to do that. That's where he leads, so. Corey, okay, very good. We had a couple of local people that are licensed that could handle it.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Anthony. Moving on to open the quarters, do we have our list here? We should probably get that transferred into Silver's or, yeah, Silver Smith at some point, right? And then we can just pronounce as that.
Linda, did you get those ones we had on the old word, put it into the old Smith?
Yes.
Okay. They did ask me to put the ones that we had been on this list, so we could just run our reports out, so it's not.
All right, thank you for that. So streets contract work, that is your approval here, Dan?
And just. In the old chat, we need to do some. Roadwork on the rain and stuff of that nature, but. Other than that, nothing.
All right, well, thank you very much. Uh, I see Marcus hand back there, Mark.
We really need some work done on the alley between fourth and third street. Both ends of the road bad. You can't hardly get out down here where it's.
Okay, well, thank you for that, Aaron. Were you aware of that?
Which is that, third and fourth?
The alley.
Yeah.
It's the only access for our, for the three residences on that.
Okay, I'll go take a look down there and get some stuff together to make the work order.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, thanks for bringing that to the meeting tonight, Mark. Okay, we've been only have the motion for booster policy. And so. The. The wording here real quick. Yeah, so what's in the packet is a reference for the motion. I'm pulling up the. Motion. Would be right now. Okay, so I'd like to make this motion. Uh, this board is committing to, sorry. This board is committed to following the town ordinances and in most cases. And in most cases, the owner of the property will be responsible for the repairs to their water and sewer system inside their property lines. And I would say fifty point twenty seven and fifty one point eleven. Both subset B. With that, however, in case of the booster pump installations, any repairs required will be addressed by the board on an individual basis.
Booster pump what? Installation?
Installations.
Thank you, beauty. I think I have the video.
So there's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second that.
So are you adding this to both bearers? In the ordinance or just a new stuff?
Motion is just referencing those second of the ordinance. Okay, here's the motion on the floor. Any, uh, any second. So, um, you'd like to begin in seconds, please? So any further respect, do you have any, any input on this one?
Um, yes. It, I think it's a common sense approach on this, um, yes, it is not in the public right away. And it is typically contrary to what ordinance requires. And, um, when I was assistant city attorney in Rapid City, and this was in the nineties, that, uh, uh, they had a major failure of height called, uh, made of polybutylene and polybutylene was turned out to be, was widely used in sewer services. And if it wasn't laid just right, if there was any rocks around that it would trip and break and become brittle and fail, you know, within five, six, seven years. Um, in some cases, and because of the number of failures and the city's requirement to use that at the time, uh, what actually this is the city council policy we adopted was something similar to this where if somebody has a failure of their, of their line, then that line, um, be paid in part, I think, if we, the city split it half with homeownership and like that, but it's precedent doing that, I think it's just a good, anything to do, this is even more uh, clear cut, and that is city pumps required by the city, um, and so forth, so I think it's well in my opinion that, uh, uh, move or replace safer, but it's time.
Okay, um, just so the, the motion is not to anywhere, it's just to state that uh, we will consider each installation on an individual basis.
Correct.
All right, very good. Any, uh, any other discussion? Anthony?
Just that, um, there's a little bit of a difference in the language for the water versus the sewer. And it's the last sentence of the first paragraph, it says complete repairs in the line for the current adaptability codes and supervision of the public works department, that's the water. But then for sewer, it says, complete repairs to the line for the current adaptive building codes and the public works department. It doesn't talk about supervision. So I mean, I could see an inspection being done. But supervising the, the work is a little bit more in depth. And if the guy's licensed to install water and sewer contractor, I mean, then he needs to call on those inspections to be brought into the city system. There's a little notice that needs to be put on, uh, responsible contractor. It's being paid by the whoever.
Okay, appreciate that comment. Uh, is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all of us in favor?
Hi.
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 Okay, we have four eyes and one extension. Very good. Moving right along, uh, it's economic development. Did that, Aaron again?
Oh, boy. Um, update on, I don't know, a new opportunity, so, um, had a reach out, somebody at a state agency, um, turns out they're looking for office space in Camosa, another law enforcement officer, and just so happens we just got our marshal hired and he happens to have a little bit of extra space in his office, so looks like we may have somebody from another agency come join Eric and, um, the cool thing about it, of course, being in economic development, it's gonna give us a little bit of a bump of revenue into the town if it plays out, so we'll, uh, there'll be more information in the future. Right now, we're still kind of going through the paperwork, but yeah, it should be a great opportunity, um, for the town to build relationships and get a little bit of revenue coming in.
Okay, great, thanks very much. Uh, Connie?
What agency was this, was first you read?
Michigan Parks.
Uh, Dan, to be upfront.
Is that going to affect your privacy or your?
It should have something on anything else with somebody else going in now.
As long as they are a sort of law enforcement and they check in, check out, as they entered that particular, uh, what do I say, space, right? So as long as the checkout system is laundered, they can, as long as they don't tamper or mess with anything conduct under company policy. I would hope, but things can change, so I don't know, uh, honestly, I don't know how their particular, uh, evidence handling is, so it could be different from mine. They could have a whole process of how they do it, so it could have a conflict depending on that particular, uh, store of evidence.
And I guess my concern was if they wanted to share your evidence room, because they're not contaminated.
It could, their store just could look like the way they bag or contain their evidence, you know, it could possibly be, uh, a conflict there because of how, because of just what because they could do it completely different than what I'd be. Because they're, with the state, I'm not, they have a whole other policy for it and just.
Okay, Donna?
Well, I think this is more like a satellite station, they will not be spending a lot of time in the building itself. And they might, uh, want to use the bigger room sort of. So it's, it's just kind of a satellite platform right now, I, I, this is the way we kind of understand it, but nothing is cutting right yet. We are still in the negotiation part.
Okay. That is?
Yes.
All right, very good.
Uh, yeah, I'm good.
I thought you had your hand up, okay. I think this was just kind of an information piece, so it looks like law enforcement community is is, uh, working on some kind of economic mils, and they're, that's very exciting, and thank you for that, guys. Uh, so let's move on to finance office and we'll let Terry talk about, uh, monthly financials.
The bank were affiliated in the package, um, I did print out the monthly financials, and I should all have a copy of those, you know, it's an extra copy. Right out, because I didn't get those in the package.
I have.
There's some papers.
Thanks, Sam, for making one.
This was through, that in the June.
The claim that we just.
Our next council.
Anything that you'd like to point out or anything like that?
I think one written on them, but it's getting those put together for our next meeting.
All right, well, thank you very much, Aaron. Um, and so, did you, that was your department update?
Um, the only other term update I have, I just want to remind that the, um, annual conference for the welcome in Italy is in here this year, September thirtieth to October second, so it's Tuesday through Friday. Third, third, I guess we have. Um, I did check today, there are no rooms at the Ram Coda, but I can get rooms at the governor's end, so this is down the street from there. So I do need to know if anybody wants to go, so we can get those lined up.
Okay.
If you could let me know, I guess. Next meeting.
Okay, uh, Aaron?
Uh, just before we move on, can I get like a three minute recess?
Oh, sure, yeah, let's, uh, let's do a five minute recess and reconvene at eight forty seven.
No, I, so when I download that, if my name is. When I press it in.
Yeah.
Oh, weird. Do I have to flash it? You have a recording, so you have a slideshow.
That's it.
Do you, uh, make a copy of it? Were they going to get that?
I'll just play it on handy.
So if we need to have a little change.
Yeah, punch this in.
Well, it showed up.
I don't know. I can't even remember what he was going to donate.
No, they just got like Sunday and it's for the, like their access to.
The other thing that they would shoot.
You remember the meeting where the judge owns the, um, can't round, said he had a whole bunch of stuff to donate to the city, did he bring, any, bring any of that in?
Yeah, it's
Okay.
Kind of a little bit of junk, like kind of busted up. What might use of it, but it's, it wasn't anything, there's a, there's a, thousands of dollars. Fire. Like a pallet of stuff, I don't know if he had more at the time, but he said, he just finds himself in situations where you see stuff, ask people if they want it, and they say, no, you can have it, and he just takes it and collects it. Sometimes he's another value.
All right, as it is now, eight forty eight, so let's reconvene at eight forty seven.
Eric, just tell the people outside, thank you.
Okay, so moving right along.
Thank you.
Will, would you like to come up and present, or did you have a question?
I, if you're flipping the green, I haven't seen anything.
Okay.
I was just told I was not getting turned this night, so I don't know.
Okay, well, thank you, uh. You know, I just drank a coffee.
Uh, for these, right, we just need to author, uh, a motion authorizing you to sign it, right?
I believe, I think so, but I think there needs to be some adjustments to this operating agreement before.
I bring out paragraph thirteen, video lottery.
Yeah, I think we need to, we need to do, uh, adjustments for Bill's specific instance, so we're not asking him to sign something that he doesn't want and will not apply to this situation.
So we could do, give you, give a motion authorizing you to negotiate and sign?
I think that's probably.
So we don't have to come to another meeting, basically, to approve it again.
Yeah, yeah, I think that would. So the other thing too, actually, before we did that, I'd like the board to consider, um, how we're going to approach his fee schedule. And so, uh, I know, I know Phil came and gave us a, a good presentation on that. And so, uh, if you'd like to.
Can I work through the mountain here?
It's on ten A.
One more page. Can I make a comment?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to say when I was talking to Cal earlier about this, and he kind of gave me the breakdown of how they determined what the it would be. You were considering, uh, based on the twenty four hours.
Yeah, I think. Yeah, I think it's all. It's, it's just, um, an idea at this point, it's, it's not any kind of official action, but.
Right. And on that, that note, I would just say, um, my concern with that, not that it's a bad idea, it's inventive and I like it, thinking outside the box, I'm just worried about the, um, other ones that aren't twenty-four hours and are still paying the same amount. And that, you know, they would want theirs adjusted if we're basing, breaking his fee, monthly fee down based on a portion of. But, but it is a store, so that would be the only other store right now. Dollar general, who knows, maybe they'll have beer later.
Yeah, so, um, Eric.
Um, I just want to go ahead and be the broken record, just I got a couple of interest on this, so I'll leave standing from discussion to vote.
Okay.
Young, aside from discussion related to being a citizen.
Okay, well, in that case, would you like to complete my share?
Taking that, yeah, I'll take it.
Alright, Donna, do you have any questions?
Well, you know, the operating hours of Bill is gonna be a lot less than even, even pantry down there, or
The corner pantry is the only one that has, the only other one that has an off sale. Right now. Well, no, the old corner pantry, yeah. Yeah. The only one in town, so we have, we actually have three off sale licenses now, because there's law changed as of July one. So we'll have, we have another one available, but we've had this one for.
Up to three hours a week.
Can we fix those hours up there?
They're open twenty-four seven.
Hours.
They can't sell that really.
Right, that's the question, right, is how many hours are allowed to sell?
Seven, two P M. To five A M has to be closed, but, excuse me, two A M to five A M has to be closed.
Two A M to seven A M?
Seven A M, yeah. I, I said that. You're right, exactly.
So it's about twenty-four hour scale to nine P M.
Well, that can be adjusted.
Still, when you look at my operating hours for, in, in, if you include the weekend, my hours are reduced on Saturdays and Sundays even more than my Monday.
And it's twelve hours Monday through Friday?
No, it's eleven.
Eleven, more does it on the weekend?
And on Saturday and seven on Sunday.
Take the average on all of them. Get a daily average.
Um, on this particular operating agreement, um, ten license fees, it says, operator agrees to pay the sum of four thousand two hundred dollars per year for retail on sale liquor license, this is an off sale liquor license, let's make sure that is. Well, I'm looking at. Looking at.
Yeah, there's, there's a good thing in here. You don't, you don't intend on operating video lottery machines, do you, Phil?
No.
I didn't think so.
That's my caper. So all of thirteen gets removed.
Yeah, yes, sir.
I believe it was like, you asked the average, I think it's like ten and thirty hours a day, is that right? Ten point four, ten point three, something like that, that's just doing it in my head, I don't know what the fuck.
Well, it's very closer than me, because I only added eleven once instead of five.
The five days of eleven, fifty-five hours, sixty-five, seventy-two.
Yeah.
What a good time to come up.
Seven point two, something.
Oh.
Seventy-two divided by seven?
Yes, ten point something.
Okay, so, um.
Ten point, oh, okay. Almost oh three, oh, two and something, oh, two something, 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 what just used?
Let's get it a little bit here, uh, so what I think what the board needs to consider now is Phil's request for accommodation with these. I, I guess I'll just go ahead and make motion um, that the board accommodates Phil by taking um, the three hundred and fifty dollar maximum, dividing it by the number of hours that are other on off sale establishment can sell inside of their store. Thereby calculating a dollar per operating hour cost.
For off sale. I, I think you can adjust each operating agreement.
Uh, we're bound by ordinance on this one, but right now, um. What's that?
I mean, it'd be nearly half.
Yeah.
Well, we're half.
So it, it's basically the, the board intent. If the board intends to accommodate you, then we will have to do some you'll sign the agreement at the current rate that's in the ordinance, which I think we talked about before, last time you were here, uh, at doing that. And then the agreement will say, um, agrees to pay the sum of per the ordinance. And so we'll have it adjusted in that way. And then, uh, what we're looking at doing just as a matter of practice is moving uh, any dollar amounts from the ordinances into TV schedules, so that we can adjust those via resolution once a year if needed, and it doesn't take a long drawn out process to do an ordinance revision. So that's anyway, I kind of got in, into the explanation in the middle of making a motion, so I apologize for that. Anyway, so, Terry, can you read what we have on there so far?
So you had a motion to allow the board to accommodate Phil takes a three hundred and fifty maximum divided by the other off the hours, and therefore calculating the dollar amount.
A dollar per operating hour. Yes, ma'am, and I think what we should put on there is, uh, the intent to accommodate him, because we can't do it at this time, exactly, because we are still bound by the ordinance.
Want to give ourselves a deadline?
Do you?
I don't know, maybe five, six days.
Well, all of our licenses go from January through December, so I think this one needs to just go through December. And then we have, we can have a, um, yeah, get everything all on the same monthly, you know, page, and, um, we can review it at that time, and Phil can tell us his issues, problems, ideas, and, uh, go from there.
Okay, so, um, we do have, uh, the motion made, is there a second?
A second.
Done in a second, so, um, so basically, the motion is just to get a matter of business on the floor, so Phil, I saw your hand up there.
At, at the previous meeting, when you approved my license, it was mentioned that you would uh, try very hard to have this matter figured out within sixty minutes, was told to me at that time. So I hope we're not the way until December to figure it out?
No, I hope not to.
So, okay, um. Yes, sir.
So I would, I wouldn't mind having, with your intent, some kind of a timeline on there to have it figured out, because i- if I start paying twenty-one hundred dollars between now and it's, I may just.
Or maybe wait until January? Another time?
No, that's not, cool. Okay.
That's fine.
That's not what I said.
But, uh, I was just asking. Anyway, so is there any, anyone?
Okay. Uh, these agreements, like any of them can be negotiated, um, however, in giving a, a paraprimal price to somebody who's a, a vendor that's not twenty-four hours, I think that's a very, that's a very fair thing to do. Um, and I think that's something that the city and towns embark on uh, very quickly, so it actually doesn't seem good sooner than later. And, um, uh, the agreement could simply be organized otherwise, uh, determined by the town board. You know, where it says that, talking about what the fee will be, and then the time of, of, uh, implementation of the thick ass, that would be much more fair to be able to say thirty days or, or, to change an ordinance, you're gonna need to be a month. But it makes sense, it makes sense, and it has to be a discount order in, in session for a class of a class of alcohol license holders, so the twenty-four hour joint, they pay this. Um, anybody, uh, if it's less than twenty hours or twenty-four hours, whatever, uh, pays that reduced rate, that creating that class, which, that way, there's no argument from other similar license holders that, hey, what's going on here, it's unfair treatment.
Yeah, I mean, really, the, the intent is to try to make it as fair as possible for everybody, and so the people that are currently operating uh, that twenty-four hour establishment, now, they don't sell alcohol in, for twenty-four hours a day, but whatever that, uh, dollar per operating hour cost will be, I think that's a, a fair way to approach it, and then it allows the the vendor to kind of decide how they want to run their business. So, Donna, did you have your hand up?
Well, I, I'm sure he probably wants to be out running by fair time. Don't you think, Phil?
As soon as possible, I've got yourself ready to go and, but I can't do anything until I have license from the state.
So he, how long will that take?
I've been in two weeks ago, and it shouldn't be take too long, because this isn't the time there, so we knew any licenses, so.
I can't even place an order for product, we don't want to have licenses and.
I mean, I could try, but they always say, don't bother them with that, you know? I would think it'd be coming, because they have weeks typically. Doesn't take that long.
With it?
That part's out of our control. Yeah. I would love, yeah, love to rush it, but, you know, that is out of our control, I want to take some.
I'm all aware of that, but I would like to have the operating agreement and fee schedule, ordinance, whatever changes you get, it's going to be made as soon as possible. Yeah. And, and before I can actually even I have to have a sign operating pretty much.
Yes.
I mean, if you can, if, if, if you know what that dollar amount is, this evening, you said it's a dollar per hour. We know the hours, it, it doesn't take very much to figure that out.
Right, yeah, I mean, I can I, I can run it later, uh, after the meeting, just so I can focus on that, instead of doing that, or maybe Terry can do it right now. Uh, it's, it's really a pretty simple calculation, as far as a dollar per operating. So we do have a motion on the boards to make further discussion on the motions. Any, okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Would you read the motion again, please?
Okay.
The intent to allow the board to accommodate Phil um, taking the three hundred, three hundred and fifty dollar maximum, dividing by other off sale hours, therefore calculating a per operating
A dollar per.
Dollars for operating amount.
And then playing that, operating hours to determine his. Okay, does everyone where, uh, Bill?
Bill, the only other thing with that that I'll mention, that we just need to keep in, in mind, and it may have no fair, but for that type of sales, they have prime time open hours. Being like, oh, seven P M, I would, I would imagine, I don't have their pounding big worth to prove this, but I would imagine most of their sales on those items are done between seven P M and midnight. Or even two A M.
Okay.
You know, so that's also something else to, to keep in mind.
Alright, uh, very good, so we have the motion on the floor, motion's been read again, all those in favor? So we have four eyes and one extending. So we have, um, voted as one to intend to accommodate you, and so now we need to address the operating agreement itself. And so, uh, it's a few sections, couple of sections that need to be stricken, and we need to adjust the language um, as far as the license fee section goes, so that it will read, uh, as per the ordinance. So.
Could this one be specific on, based on the calculation? The next years would be as per current fee schedule that will happen place by then.
I don't know that we can do that, because I think we have to follow the fees that are in the ordinance for this, right? Right, uh, yeah.
Yeah, the, the, the amendment, a speedy amendment to the ordinance to accomplish the intent of what you, the board wants to do. Do it, I can mention underscore speedy, because meanwhile, he's hanging fire and, and full dollar on.
Okay. So would anyone like to make a motion for the operating agreement side?
Well, I think.
Do we need to, do we need to make, address the issues with it at a time, or can we, uh, agree to amend the operating agreement to match our intention and to match, um, what Phil's intent is? In, like, in regards to video lottery section, and also to change that to a off sale? Would you feel more comfortable if we had the actual agreement in front of us?
I would like to see the agreement, I would say that after I see the agreement, when you get it typed up tomorrow, or, or whatever, I can give my blessings to it after I see it, um, and then I, I, I would like to see Phil get it as soon as possible, but I don't want to do it, I don't want to agree upon it until I see it.
I think we could have a first reading by next meeting for the amendment to the ordinance, including the additional uh, schedule.
Then at the next meeting, the completed agreement will be in front of everybody that can knowingly, uh, prove it or not, and also the universal reading of the amendment to the alcohol ordinance. We should, just allow him, us to. We should just allow him, uh, strip on that.
Is the next forward meeting.
We could approve it at that point, which would be in time for. Still had before beers and years. This operating agreement. Not since we're having three things that aren't that, so.
So. I feel if I'm hearing this wrong, but if the license came back Wednesday, tomorrow, we could fix the language in this to state off sale. And also add the board intends to amend this operating agreement with a different fee schedule. Once they have adjusted their ordinance. We could sign that operating agreement at that time so that it doesn't. Slowly down, or do you have to have that go through a meeting?
Yeah, I would have to go through a meeting.
But can he still serve? Could he still sell before this is published twice?
Yeah, if it's issued by the state, I think he could go ahead and do that, and I think we would be okay with that. Okay, um, the other part about it is, is the changing typo on so, also, also. Something like that in a small phrase being inserted, as long as we know what that is. Um, those aren't material terms to the agreement. I think one could easily say they're not a material term to the agreement, therefore passing of those caveat in there. Go ahead and pass it tonight if that, if anyone is satisfied, I know that we had mentioned something about taking out thirteen. So.
And then replacing said some shall be payable at the rate that the board to the current future.
Well, be through the ordinance, and then the ordinance would refer to the. That way, the, the operating, operating agreement would be valid at the time of the signing.
Yeah.
And then, um, we can adjust all future operating agreements in the same way to make them match.
Sure, yeah.
So, does that make sense to you? That seemed like a good, good way to proceed.
I want him to be able to sell as soon as possible, and so if that's what, um, yeah, um.
Would you like, would you like to make a motion? Would you like to still see the operating agreement?
I want to see it, yeah, but with the, with the changes, if the changes are all made as far as the. On sale, off sale, the fees and taking out the number ten.
Thirteen.
Thirteen, um, A and B about the video lottery, um, I, I would. I would okay it.
So, so as an example, I'm not making the motion right now, but as an example. Could state that, um, pending the review of the vice president. The agreement could be signed after it's presented, or something to that effect.
Yeah, it's, it's conditionally approved, um, until, uh, the, uh, vice president. Or if you want me to. Be that, um. Review, review of by a city attorney, and I'll put it on immediate fastback as soon as possible. But it's, it's up to you. You want her to review it, make sure that that's, and that's fine, and that's, that's good too. But to conditionally prove it so we know where we are tonight, so he can walk out here and he's approved.
Often to approve intended upon Kent and Linda reviewing the edit. Edited version, whatever they were that.
Let's. Terry finished writing. You, are you, you, are you satisfied with that?
Is Linda making the most?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, glad I said that.
No, me and Linda were having a conversation.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Okay.
You, you, you've got it written.
So we're conditionally approving until the vice president and city attorney. When we view the evidence needed for the operating agreement.
Okay. Does sound right to you?
Motion to approve the operating agreement.
Right.
Intention upon, that's being completed and approved. By, hey.
I'm just gonna go back and listen to the recording because.
Okay, all right, so you've been saying, do that motion? Okay, so Linda. Okay, do we need any further discussion on that?
I mentioned that one, I'm putting your ten B like you said, too. And not because it does straight up, but it means maintain it's found in the great along.
Yeah, that's, that's intended to be removed as well.
Anything video lottery related.
Pointing that out and can be as well.
Yeah, we did cover that one too, so I appreciate you pointing that out, and so, um. Do we have any further discussion on the motion on the floor? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Four eyes, and I think we have one extension again. Okay, very good, so, um. Yeah, so, uh, Terry. We'll all take a look at it and work together. Sure, that'll work, and then once we get the approval from Linda and Kent, then I can sign it. Uh, I'll get together, I guess, Phil and I can come here.
Emailing a copy once you get.
Yeah, with an email.
Everyone on the board should get a copy.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Moving right along to, uh, fifteen B, upgrading the agreement notice of cancellation. So, uh. I'll leave that to you guys. So, anyone like to open up the discussion?
I would like Terry to read what she got from the state as far as this, um, ninety day notice is. So that everybody understands it.
Now, when I had asked Laura Cunningham with the state, um, she said. The town's option is in that operating agreement because it does allow ninety days cancellation by either party. And she said generally the operating agreement is for the liquor license, so that license, at one point she said we go back to the town. But then again, she said later, um, today that, I think, I believe Andy talked to her this morning. And they put those licensed, so now they're inactive, and she said, and so I verified that with her, and she said, I have put both the liquor license. And the malt beverage license as inactive status, and that's just because you're not open right now and you're not operating. But she said they're still holding the license. So she kind of contradicted what she said before.
So which.
Okay, Andrea?
So what she explained to me today is that you guys can go ahead and cancel the operating agreement with me, the only thing that changes is that. I no longer pay you guys, and they just sit there and active, but they're still tied into those addresses. Because my liquor doesn't expire until the thirty first of December, and my malt beverage, um, and beer license is good until June of next year. So I have basically until December thirty first, um, to, to find a new location and to change that address. Now, if I don't, that liquor license still comes available then, as it would be let go. But you have to have your beer and malt beverage license to get the liquor license, and that's not up until June of next year. So they're just sitting inactive, but they're still tied onto those addresses, so you guys can either take my payment every month. Or cancel it, but it's still tied in those addresses, and they're still with the state, and then nobody gets any money for it.
And they're in individual names, they're not, they used to be town licenses, and we're leasing them through the operating agreement, now they're issued just in the same.
They are. I don't know when that changed, Hannah. I don't know.
So I did come in yesterday and try and pay up until December thirty first. Um, Linda would only let me pay it until October, so I'm more than happy to come pay the other two months tomorrow.
At that point, we hadn't heard this about the. Suspending, is that what you call it?
They're just basically inactive.
Inactive, in, in activating the license, so.
Okay, let it be, they can't be changed, let it be. Or you can suspend it and save her the money.
You're on the sec, this, the second.
But it's holding the license, it can, it can't be used, so. We would lose, yeah.
I'm just kind of curious if it's even ethical in any way to consider to continue accepting. Her payments when she can't operate her business. I mean, I think she kind of wants to pay us like he's doing the town a favor, but. Doesn't really owe the town any favors.
But it's the right thing to do.
Yeah, um, this, you know, I don't, I don't, I, just to say, I don't think you should feel obligated to do that in any way, I think that, so.
That is a choice for you to make.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so we're not issuing the ninety days then?
Well, Donna, my, my building was taken from me, that doesn't mean I don't want to be a business owner anymore. So I'm trying to find a new location.
My only comment. You can look at it both sides, whether, you know, it's inactive. Cancel the operating agreement and renew it when you find a place, but since she's still. Holding a license and holding that up from anybody else that wanted. There's something we don't have right now. I mean, her, the license that she's holding, it's basically holding a spot that we can't give to anybody else. So when you look at it ethically, it, it could go either way there, where you're still charging the three fifty because it's. Being held up and can't be used elsewhere, rather than there being no name on the license and not being used is different. In my opinion. Or you give her the ninety day. Notice and then cancel it, but I don't know with the licenses being inactive and not returned to the state. To me is, is a different situation.
Uh, Linda?
Well, thinking about it kind of like that. I think we can give her the ninety day notice for the operating agreement for that address. Still, she can hold her license. We wouldn't, um, need the actual monthly fee from it. And then the owner of that building, should that be their choice to have a bar, could then. Have it in the ninety, after the ninety days, rather than waiting longer than that. Because it's tied to the address.
Right, the operating agreement and the license.
After the ninety days, it's still tied to that address.
Yeah, so, um, it sounds like what you're saying, Andrea, is. That the licenses are not tied to the operating agreement, is that?
Correct, they're tied to the address, so even if you guys cancel the operating notice with me, they can't open up a bar without. Me letting go of that liquor license, and I'm not letting it go. So that's, that's what happens when you lease a building, that's how it works. So my liquor license is not up until the thirty first of December. So then if I don't have a new address, then obviously, yes, I would let it go because I can't renew. So December thirty first, if I do not have a new address to transfer that liquor license to, then they're able to go ahead and apply. However, they have to have the beer and malt beverage license first, and that's not up until June, so they're looking at June. Of next year, if I don't have another place, but I will, I would guess by December, figure out what I'm doing. So I'm not signing it over to them, I'm not letting it go. Ask if I'd be willing to sign it over.
I mean, there's not any. Statement here.
Trying to get them to, I mean, they're not turning that department.
So Terry, you didn't talk to her?
I talked to Laura Cunningham, I have special taxes, and she kind of, the one time she said, um. You know, you could cancel the operating agreement. Um, and she said generally the operating agreement is for the liquor license, so that license will go back to the town of Camosso, if the operating agreement is canceled. But then she turned around today and said, okay, the license, you make him inactive, but she's still holding license.
And that's what she had told me.
So, I thought the operating agreement was for like the payment of the license, because the town is holding their licenses. And we have an operating agreement to get that revenue where.
But she can't operate in, in this town without an operating agreement.
Correct.
So, and, okay, I think, well. I, I just really, what I'm having, I guess, starting with, I guess, really talk revenue again a lot, but. I think more, more of a key point is that not showing a valid lease or ownership of a premises. Um, that license must be attached to a premise, like she's saying, and there's no premises to attach it to. It's, it's a, it is what it would seem like, so.
And I think as a premises, I just have to change to find a new premises, yeah, and I'm not putting up a tent, so.
Yeah, yeah, I, I know what you're saying, but it's, it's, there's no, there's no legal ownership interest that you have, lease or otherwise. In the premises that it's attached to, so.
Well, it seems like the, the license is issued through the state. Okay, and they, actually, you know what, before I say that, Terry, you had your hand up, I forgot to call on you, uh, it's Morris, right?
Yeah.
Let, let's hear your comment.
Well, my, my comment, when I did raise my hand, was gonna be, is. We've already, our intent was to be here for a long time.
Right, yeah.
And, you know, we, we've done sponsorships and things like that, made commitments further out, we were looking out. You know, I've been here since two thousand and five, um, you know, it's, it's. So the intent was, our intent was to be here long term, and so now we're in a. In a year's spot where we need to.
Well, we were supposed to be able to buy the building.
Either buy or build or lease, and, you know, the real estate market in Camosso is, is. Anyways, do your will. And, uh, yeah, well, the intent was for a long time.
Right, well, I guess, I guess the point was gonna be, or is, that. The, the license itself is controlled through the state, and then we can. And then we control the operating agreement. I guess, uh, there's not a whole lot of overlap with those. It's almost as if they're kind of like separate things. And so, uh, so let me, let me just level with you. My, what my current under, before tonight, my understanding was that the license was tied to the operating agreement. And so it would make sense to then issue the ninety day uh thing, although, uh, my intent was to issue that with the caveat that if you found a place in that time, then obviously that, that would timeout and then the, we could transfer it to that location, but since they're kind of like two separate things, it doesn't make sense, I don't think, to do anything with the agreement. I mean, that's kind of what I'm thinking now. Uh, do you guys have any, Aaron?
I feel like, yeah, like, like, just like thinking of how it metaphorically, I mean, you have a license, you drive, but you don't necessarily have a car. He has a license to alcohol license, but doesn't have a, a vehicle. But, um, I guess, I think the underlying question about what happens whether or not we cancel this operating agreement, it seems to think, to me, seems to me, the only thing that changes if we cancel this agreement is that she no longer has to pay us. Now, my question is, do you really want to keep paying us?
Well, I'm a citizen of Hermosa.
Yeah.
And my intent was not to lose my lease and not be paying, you know, money to the community. So I have no problem paying that three hundred and fifty a month.
And you don't want to jeopardize a smooth transition if we do find another place. So a seven hundred dollar bill is, is
Minimal.
Minimal compared to jumping through the hoops again.
Yeah, so it's kind of like, yeah, I guess the idea is to keep this going in case you do find a place and it's just one less hurdle to get, get over at that point.
Correct.
Yeah, um, and it does say in here that the fee shall be paid. It doesn't make any stipulation for if, if they have a, a business running under this agreement or not, so.
Times fall or issue, if the lease was canceled. And to their point, if it's possible in operating agreement, if the state issued the license, certainly the town has the discretion to call it inactive in the town inside the jurisdiction. And, but then I would urge that we put, the town board put a date certain of when it needs to, when there needs, when they need to have a place to operate. Otherwise, you got a dead license laying out there. Our license is being occupied without visioning.
Yeah, but, um, if there's no attachment from the license to the operating agreement, whatever we do with the agreement doesn't affect the license.
Well, that's the theory, but, uh, but the agreement controls whether or not they can operate in town.
Sure. Yeah, I understand, I understand that. So you guys had your hand up back there. Would you like to come?
Well, I was just saying, you know, if, if I don't find something by the thirty first of December, then that license, I can't renew it on that address. So I wouldn't come back if I don't have anything by then.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, and, and actually, if I may say so, and then you had your hand up again too, right, Morris?
Same thing. The block there for us.
Right, and, and if I may say so too, it looks like this agreement is tied to lots twenty-three, twenty-four, block five, which is down there, right? So if you, it's Yeah, it's, it's where your former location, right? So it, it looks like if you did find a new location, we'd have to do a new agreement anyways, right?
Well, there was a, a part that she'd have to transfer her license to a new location.
Yeah, the agreement doesn't mention her.
So.
So this would need to be reno-located regardless. All right. I have one more question, if you don't mind. Um, the lottery machines, is that something you wanted to do? Or is it something you felt kind of compelled to do just?
Most part, yeah.
Do you think it's beneficial?
Um, yeah.
Yeah, your, your overhead costs of after employees, and then it's a small town bar, right? And so you, you need those, whether you love them or hate them, most of the hate them good.
But they are helpful.
Yeah.
Okay, because the reason I mentioned that, we did a little research and it does seem to be the case that, um, if you have if you want lottery machines, you must have a liquor license, but it does not go the other way around. You do not have to have the lottery machines in order to have a liquor license. So I just wanted to make sure so that because, you know, I mean, I don't know if it was a revenue generator, just for future.
Yes.
You'd want to have that negotiated out.
Like all my machines are still, like, everything's still sitting down. They haven't had time to get it out. It's all disabled, but, yeah.
No, it's just my, just cares.
I mean, as far as a resolution for tonight, or resolve the issue, not a resolution per se, but I'm almost wondering if we should table this for a month or two to see if things develop and, and then revisit it because with my current understanding, and we can do some more research, but it sounds like as far as license goes, our, our hands are tied, and no matter what we do, at least at this, this point, with my current understanding, no matter what we do, we can't affect that, so me, um, if, if we made any changes, it wouldn't affect the license, which is what purportedly that we would need to affect anyway, so almost wonder if we should just do a motion to table for thirty days. So the I mean, I mean. Oh, hold on a second, Aaron.
Just think if December, November, October, we need to, so just being, being fair and, and thinking about it. As it stands now, it'll fall off a cliff December thirty first.
Yeah.
So I think if we were to readdress this, we would do it ninety days before that point. If we were to table this for a period of time. So December, November, October. So final meeting in September. I think we should revisit this.
Okay, Linda, did you have a comment?
I, I totally understand where you are coming from. And the thing that I really appreciate is that you're I mean, the fact that you're willing to pay that monthly fee to keep that license so that you can find a place to use that license, I, I think is awesome and it's a, a benefit to the citizens for that purpose. The problem that I have is, I guess, it's still is there's still the beer license.
Yeah, that's good until June.
It's good until June.
Next year.
Unless you decide to transfer it.
Correct.
And so that's basically leaving the owner of that building.
They left me out on the street. I don't feel that at all. Yes, I'm there. I'm sorry.
No, I, I understand your side of it. That's, that's not even what I'm, what I'm getting at. I mean, I
I'm pulling new license. Like, there's nothing, like, we're, we're not gonna go there. I'm fully ready. December thirty first, if it falls off, I shall be feeling nice if I have not got a new place to transfer myself. Otherwise, I will hold on to the malt beverage license deal, and I'm not feeling bad about it.
I, I, I understand that, and I, I get that whole thing. I work for the city. I, I am trying to care for the city finances and, and laws. So, so then at that point, you're kind of taking money away from the citizens.
Anybody else could come in. Nobody's gonna go into that bar that they're gonna open anyways after what they did. So it doesn't matter. You're gonna make more money off of me, paying the fee.
But you won't be paying it after December. And I realize that we can discuss this at that time.
Right.
Uh, and, and that's fine too.
But we don't know what I'm gonna have by then.
Right, exactly, exactly.
And I'm not gonna build back.
And I'm, and I, I, that's all on that side.
It's called karma. What goes around comes around.
To them. But to the city and the citizens.
I'm paying you until December.
Until December. So at that time, or before that time, first of December meeting, whatever, um, whenever, we can have another discussion about it. And, and, um, I, I just would
You don't mess with people's livelihoods and remember how you said you protect the citizens?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're not citizens in that, in that building.
But, but I'm not trying.
We're getting a little bit off the rails here. Can you, can you just quickly make your point?
My point is that it, it is the rest of the town where that income would not be coming from. That's not them, not you. I, I, it's the revenue that helps to pay towns bills. That's all.
Maybe I will give you an anonymous donation.
All right, well, that's all I want to say, and I wanted you to realize where I was at on that and to just think about that in five months or whatever. Thank you.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to table this until the second meeting in September.
Motion made by Aaron. Do we have a second? On a second, okay, do we need any further discussion? Is that all those in favor? My advice, motion carries, so we'll revisit this second meeting instead of September. Is that correct, Aaron?
Yeah, second meeting in September.
Okay, so, uh, I think in the meantime, we'll have to look into this a little more and try to see exactly how these relationships or these documents go. Thanks, Laura.
Drive careful, Laura.
Alrighty, very good. Well, let's move on to new business. We have sixteen B, the DOT application for the parade.
I'd like to make that motion.
Linda makes the motion to accept. Shannon, second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Okay, we're on to items from constituents. See there, the stipulations on the agenda. Does anybody have any comment? Any, any constituents? Uh, I saw Dan in March.
Thank you. Um, there was just one comment earlier about the north water sewer and that there was no input from the citizens when that decision was made on that line. On that issue, that was over a year of meeting. And it was a five-member board voted on it. There was public influence. Many of the nights, nobody showed up to the meeting. We couldn't discuss the item. And for the benefit of the community now, when that new tower is built, water and sewer line is going to be the best aspect at a lower rate of the years ago that town was put in, bringing infrastructure back into the community. Not to mention a boost for every other circumstance, plus the revenues that are still gonna come off of that pressing property of their, are gonna be generating enough that pay for every single bit of that property at the same asking, so every discussion is public and every discussion is open to its itself. The right discussion, you're saying that's all, didn't you?
Okay, sir.
Appreciate all your hard work.
All right, thank you. Uh, Martin, any thought?
Um, I'm just wondering on collapsed sewer lines. Uh, say if my sewer line over there collapsed and I don't get it repaired right away, I can put a porta potty in my backyard then?
Um, I don't know. I just, I don't have a comment on it. Does anybody?
I don't, I don't not know what the ordinance says about that.
It's a example.
I, I would
You were talking about the, whatever, other that's especially about ordinance, the same ordinance, pending later. It also says you can't have freedom. So, people that don't understand the freedom, it was also usually one person commented online, they didn't know what freedom is, but I, I agree, your ordinance states it right here. It's the homeowner's responsibility to fix that from their home to the city and then the city to the sewer line is their responsibility. So I've heard there's more than one collapsed sewer line in, in a certain area of this town, so I would like to see somebody look into that and get that collapsed.
Okay.
I was just gonna talk about all the money that was spent out there. The reason I started coming to these meetings is because our old part of town, the infrastructure is falling apart. I don't know where the money that was gonna come from to fix any of that. We start putting full pressure water on that. There's gonna be less of lines everywhere. It's gonna be disaster. We probably had extra money to do that, but we could have maybe fixed our infrastructure first, but it's beside the point. What's done is done.
Um, I was, I was just gonna say, that is one thing, um, that I don't remember exactly when the discussion had, but that was, that was a pointed discussion that Anthony brought up, that we are getting more pressure from the new well, the new, the new water tank. One thing he does want to get ahead of is making sure our downstream infrastructure is gonna handle it. So, um, I assume now that we've greenlit his, the Benish operating agreement, we're probably gonna start seeing some traction coming at the apartment, right? Now that we've, uh
Traction in what in particular?
Like as far as looking, like getting prepared to look over and make sure the new infra, the old infrastructure is gonna handle the the increase in the water pressure and volume that's gonna come up in the well and the channel, right?
Yeah, so, I mean, they're, they're responsible for operating it, and he's been studying it and everything, and we'll just have to make sure that we approach that very carefully when the time comes.
Um, I just wanted to say that they have recently looked at that sewer line, you know, when we're having issues and I think there's intent to, you know, continue looking at all them. So our engineer knows what condition they're in. And I've got the belief that he wouldn't allow pressure so much that they're gonna crumple everybody's pipes. Um, but they are old and there are, you know, areas that need to be fixed. He did address the board about, um, special kind of like balloon lining inner, basically like an inner tube that you put through it, um, that might help. And so it's not, you know, we are aware of it and we are looking towards the future. And we're going to deal with that when it comes up, especially with our own shedding truck now, um, and cambering and all that. We do that every September, right? Maybe he's gonna do it more. I don't know. That's all in the service contract, but I know he's aware of that. And we're gonna make sure that, um, it's taken care of. It might be piece by piece. I, I don't know how, how it's hoping to play out, but we're not gonna leave you hanging while we're building new stuff up. That would be my end.
Yeah, I just was hoping that the city would do something about the sewer line soon because the sewers down in our home is pretty bad. And it, it makes you sick. I mean, it makes you nauseated. And I just, I would like to see something about it before something bad happens.
Yes, ma'am. Have you, have you submitted a complaint to the town to document the situation and the location and everything?
No, I guess I don't know where to go to get them.
Okay, yeah, just right here. I would suggest you doing that. And then we can kick off the process to begin the investigation and see what's going on there.
It's on the same streak. Probably right next
He already looked at that place one.
Right.
It's right across the street from, and up the street from Conny. And that's where all that smell was at.
Right, I saw a hand over here.
I was just gonna make sure that, um, Anthony hadn't already tested that. And, and seeing as this is the first time, I guess I have heard about your actual house having a descent. Uh, we'll have to make sure that it does get tested now that we know about it, but
theirs was tested when they did that whole street.
It was tested.
Yes.
Okay.
Now they've got sewer gas coming up from basement, that's what I'm saying. Their next in line, it's Joan, and then she Their next in line, it's Joan, and then she comes across supposedly across.
Right.
They're right behind her on the line, I believe. So I'm not sure what's, what's going on.
Well, so I, I think the best thing to do in this case is for her to submit the complaint and then that will trigger the, the process and we can, we can get everything done. And really, and so we, we can help document everything and make sure that, we could be having an understanding of the problem and then we know what to look for, you know what I mean?
So is, with public works, though, will Anthony come out and look? Or who's, who will come up?
It, the last time it was done, it was Anthony and, um, from Royal Water.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um. But, so I'm sure that's, it'll be, probably be the same or somebody that worked for Anthony. Now that the public works contract is different.
Okay, uh, my thumb on one hand. Dan, did you have one last comment?
Oh, just that the pressures from the water aren't going to affect anything on the sewer. The water lines are all new within, oh, about twenty years. But that's back to them. It won't be an effect with anything you guys do with the water. Sewer is going to be always the same situation on it. It's just, it's the old play title. And there are other issues and problems. So it's either be like Shannon said, aligning it or replacing it.
And he was waiting until we got like, um, maybe five, five to ten houses that needed it because it was going to be a cheaper rate for them to come down and do it all at once. And they do the whole street, you know?
Yep.
And I think it is Cameron. I mean, you did Cameron, you showed her and told her or whatever, so.
Other ones.
All got committed.
Okay. All right. So I think we're on to trustee input. Uh, Shannon, did you have anything?
I just want to say, um, you really might have some of your law enforcement updates, I think. We knew we needed it, but wow.
Yeah.
Impressive. And I'm very proud of our entire for, I think, Anthony and Ken both do great work as well. And, um, I like the board. I like how we can debate back and forth and see things from different angles, um, and keep the community, you know, public involved, so. Just proud of you.
Thanks. Thanks, Shannon. Donna?
I think it was a good meeting. Got a little late, but a lot of discussion. And, uh, some of it was re-discussed, but I am glad that Hillary's on board with us. And I want to thank Jill for the comment she made. It was very curious. At a board.
Linda?
Yeah, I am, well, unfortunately, I was writing so fast during the first part of the meeting that I can't even read my own writing on something that I put on the trustee input. Really sad. Uh, I had two things under there. The other was that Terry, I did not mean to make you think that you were incompetent at all. Not at all. You, you, you do good work and we have discussed this before. I, it's just like I said, there's a lot to learn and I don't think anyone can learn it in a year. And for one thing, because it's constant changing. And for another thing, because I think it was yesterday or today when I came in and you were like, didn't get to do anything on my list because it was so busy, you know? And, and that's going to be the way that is. It's what happens in this office is different continually. So I, I didn't, I, if I gave you that impression, I'm sorry. It's not what I meant to do. And, um, yeah, thank you. Long meeting, but good meeting. Thank you.
Okay, Aaron.
Upward and onward.
Very good. Uh, so I don't have any input. I was intending to do an executive session tonight. Maybe we can do a quick one if you guys agree to it. Um, but we can do a, like a, like a five-minute recess before we make that motion, if you guys are okay with that. Okay, so we're reconvening at ten P M.
I was growing up there. Do you know where your children are? That's my club of thought. It's Fox News. That's how I knew it was that time. There's a thing come up on. Tore the cookie?
Oh, what's that?
I'll throw twenty and then we have sixty.
For the, for tomorrow night?
Yeah, for the cookie.
That's, I think Bill's getting all that.
So maybe that, but it's getting more.
Yeah, so any, any of that is open. It's like a pour drain. Pour drain, any of those. So, I've been doing that, but I don't know. This is always, yeah. We'll, we'll give it to me on that. I will. Okay. We will make sure Anthony gets some of this.
Thank you, Phil.
Yep, thank you.
I don't think so.
I guess that would be not a great, yeah.
Yeah. And right now, I'm sorry if you're taking a little. You're trying to keep all their. And they are incredibly difficult. Yes, I understand that. That's right, they don't. That's where it is, unless you don't understand. Like even your. That they sleep with the lamb and there's some that we could get three. Deserted or whatever you want to call it. Is it the outhouse over there? With your building the house? Is that someone who has a dog? I think they're talking about both of them. I don't know. My feeling about was going to be. What, both? What, both outhouses? For what? I don't know. I, maybe she died and that she was having a party. And, oh, I didn't even know she had. I thought it was. Joan's got one right by the side of her garage, um, on, on my street. So if you go down my street, you'll, you'll notice it sitting there. And we're directing everything generally. Not to actually, there's two in town. Well, I, I don't know where the other one is. Supposedly by Joan's house, yeah, like over by Joan's. I mean, this is the question. So this is something we've got to go over the ordinance on that. See, I personally, like I said, Joan used it one afternoon, one party. And she was keeping it, I think, because she had one party. She was hoping to have another party in August. And other than that. I would like to have somebody that doesn't live here anymore come in and, well. But you're not going to stop that. Now, I know. I, it is, the, the, the way it's held. Yeah, I mean, crap, my day starts and it's ended before you know what I'm doing. But I suppose the neighbors are in belief that she's using that because their sewer does not work. Well, that's not at all. And if she was, wouldn't she put it right in mine? Well, that's what I said. I suppose. Yeah, I think it's a good spot. You'd have to walk out there. Both there in the middle of the, that one is there. That's what I said. She uses her party because she always has her party in the garage and in the yard of the new house that does not yet have a bathroom or a plumbing. And so she had this party and she, she ordered the outhouse for this party. And the party, like this white party was very. And I know somebody else and I'm like, I didn't even notice it. And I go down like, oh, yeah, I guess it is it. But then I'm like, I didn't hear that. It makes any sense that it would be, she'd be using it. Either the houses. And it would be called it to the house, but like. And I've never seen anybody out there by. And the thing is, one that, that was on the lot where the house is getting built, that's getting used. You know? That was, well, I, you know, I guess I never thought of one. I can understand why. Well, I can too, but, but we got to get this figured out by ordinance and by legalities. I mean. It's like. Yeah, I couldn't figure out where the second one was. But he does have one up there and I, I mean, I thought it was. So it's not just being on there, huh? Yeah. Yeah.
So, uh, I'll, uh, yeah, convening back in and.
Did we make most of the exit the other meeting?
We don't have to.
We do that for the.
Okay, reporting turn. Okay, I'd like to call a reconvention of the meeting at ten o'clock four, uh, four minutes later than intended. So I'd like to, this time make a motion to enter into executive session for, um, personnel and contract.
I'll second that motion if you're making it or I'll make it at, um, what are we at, ten o'clock four still? Ten o'clock five, ten o'clock four?
Tell me, Linda, seconds. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
So Eric, I want to know did you get that in line of duty?
Yeah, so when I was moving the.
Yeah, we're ready to do this. One second guys. Okay, so Don would you like to make a motion?
I make a motion at the executive session.
And adjourn.
At ten forty-four.
Ten forty-four, good, very good. All right, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries and.
I would like to make a motion that we adjourn this meeting. First, I would like to say that there will be no motions made out of executive session. And the time is ten forty-five.
Linda made a motion, we have a second. We have a second for Linda's motion.
My second.
All those in favor?
Everybody wants to spend the night, huh?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.